Oh, we need K. We lost K.
Oh, we need K. We lost K.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I thought they had said they wanted to come on the rest of them, but I don't know. They didn't respond to that. I'm kind of skeptical of their outlook and invites because I didn't get any notification when they canceled. I was ready to go.
That's right. That's all right. No worries. We won't. That's okay. So now everyone's ready. That's okay. All righty then, I will call to order this joint meeting of the Katati City Council and the successor agency to the former Katati Community Redevelopment Agency for this Tuesday, April 4th. And this is our strategic planning meeting. So with that, can we have a roll call, I guess?
Councilmember Rivers.
Here.
Councilmember Lemus.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sparks.
Here.
Mayor Harvey.
Here.
Thank you for that. Then we will move on to public comment pursuant to California Government Code Section 54954.3A. Members of the public wishing to address the council may do so at the beginning of the special meeting and such comments shall be limited to the special meeting topic. And with that, Kevin, could you reach out to the Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you for that. And there is no one in the audience here, so we will move on to the next item. Approval of the minutes for March 7th. So are there any? Yes?
I'm sorry, this is on the revised minute with the additional things that we added, that we asked, that additional projects proposed by city council. I had requested that we add a project to incorporate bike facilities into our pavement management plan, and that didn't make it into the minutes. So I'd like to request that that be added to the minutes, and then I'll bring it up when we're discussing public works today.
On the additional projects proposed by city council. Did you mean, so there's one that says ensure that bike and ped portions of projects are reviewed by the planning commissions?
That's a different thing.
Yeah, you mean added to pavement projects?
Right, right. Actually, maintaining bike paths.
Oh, maintaining bike paths. Sorry, got it.
Adding the bike paths to the pavement management plan.
Okay. Any other comments about the minutes? Seeing none, I will open it up for a public comment on the minutes. There's no one here in the audience. Could we open it up to Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you. Bring that back to the council. I'd be looking for a motion, sounds like.
With that change, I'd move approval of the minutes?
Second.
Have a motion in the second with the amendment. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Yeah, I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there. Thank you.
All right. So we have four yeses and an abstention. So thank you for that. And then we will move on to the next item, which is the study session, and we have a few items under this. The first one is the presentation of the 2023 through 2033 general fund long-range financial forecast. Going to guess that it's Angela, but.
That would be me. Angela Quarter, Director of Administrative Services. So good evening, Mayor, council members, and members of the public, remote and in the future. The first presentation tonight is for the report on the long-range financial forecast covering a big breadth of time, 10 years from 2022 to 2033. Before getting into this report, I'd like to emphasize that what is presented is just as a use of a management tool. It shows trends and allows for strategic and informed planning around city finances and presents three really distinct scenarios, which are not projections, but rather provide a what-if type financial impact. Next slide. I didn't get the little flipper. Thank you. It's okay. However you want to do it. Here, I'll take it. So what are some of the overall assumptions that go into this forecast? So first, we have to assume that Katati follows some financial trends that are consistent with our region or with the state. And so we aren't isolated. We aren't our own nation. We don't have our own economy. We are derived by other impacts around us. So with that, there's other impacts that happen to our revenue streams and our expenses based on those macroeconomic factors. Secondly, that this is based on the best available information now, and that is subject to change. For example, the most updated sales tax projections that we have, and we just met with our consultants, is through Q4 2022. So we don't have this last quarter's information, really. So this is based on that, and we know a lot has changed in the last few months from where we were in December. So things change. We try to incorporate what we think is going to happen. They incorporate that into their assumptions. But again, we have to use what we have, and that's why these are, again, assumptions, and we build projections on those. Also, those changes are less reliable the farther out you go into the future. We can kind of have some foresight and look into the next few months, look into the next six months, year, two years. But as soon as you start looking at three years, five years, 10 years down the road, it really is just a trend and expectations. So these are, again, presented in the forecast and our basis for these scenarios because we had to think of what are some projections we would like to include? What would be helpful, beneficial as a management tool? So first was really a status quo, which is the general gradual growth. This is kind of a conservative approach. Nothing really significant happening in our economy, nothing major, big, nothing major, bad. It's just a status quo. Second is that we have a new revenue stream included from the hotel. And what would that look like for our basis of revenues with really a minor impact in our expenditures? And our third is really our worst-case scenario, which is a recession scenario, which mirrors what happened to the city in 2008 during the Great Recession. Okay. So what revenue assumptions are included within this baseline? So again, it's a baseline, so it's what we use to do the other two scenarios from. So for sales tax, we're presuming similar to our proposed 2324 budget, that we have flat revenues for the next two years. As consumer spending changes post-COVID are happening with higher interest rates, people are more spending on experiences rather than goods like fixing up their homes or getting an experiential difference by maybe doing cannabis or liquor or something else that they can take home and maybe derive some different goods out of COVID, maybe. So we are seeing that currently, and that is what is proposed in our actual budget. And then subsequent to those years, as we're looking out, we're going to see that trend come back up at approximately 5.2% growth, which is, again, based on those historical average growth for sales in the year. Back, I think we went back 20 years. So for property tax, these are based on consultant projections, again, similar to sales tax, which evaluate changes in property transfers, property recapture, new developments. And the proposed increase was considered gradual over three years and increased an average of 6.4% in the remaining years. So we are seeing, you know, sales values increase, and so that has a lasting effect as we continue to develop more, bring in more properties, transfer more properties, so on. So for other taxes, which is primarily cannabis tax currently, we're anticipating a decline of approximately 15% in the next year due to increased competition, changes in consumer spending from 2324. But then again, we see it increasing again in the subsequent years going out. As things become more normalized, other things come back in, people maybe spend more time at home, and there's less competition as things become more regulated. All other revenues are estimated at a steady growth rate of 2% per year, all leading to an average revenue growth over the 10 years of 3.3% per year. So here's a graphic of the historical values and the trends for our top three revenue sources, which are property tax and, I like to say, sales tax combined, but it's our Measure S sales tax and our Bradley Byrne sales tax. Those are our main sources of revenue, and these are really the historical pieces of those. So for expenses, to make the baseline assumption projections, we use the fiscal year 2223. So we started on these projections before we were really working on budget. And so rather than pressuring all the department heads to get their budgets in right away, we went ahead and built out the forecast based on 2223 as a base and incorporated adjustments from there based on what we were assuming was going to happen, including major expenses like salaries and benefits, which include the existing MOU set in place. But it does not include any new positions that we'll talk about in the budget coming up. And it does include other things like health insurance increases are the things that are part of the salaries and benefits. It does include the pension unfunded liability payments that are based on the last analysis we had last September. So those are the minimum contributions to that pension unfunded liability based on where we're expecting the loss to come in. So we did incorporate that into the forecast as well as the minimum contributions to the 115 trust. The debt service, that is included within here. I know we're just talking about operations, but there is debt service income. That includes the street and pension debt payments, excuse me, expenses. So these are those payments for those debt services. Overall, other expenses are projected at a straight-line 3.5% growth over the year. This is really CPI index where we're seeing things kind of come in. Or things that we embed within our contracts are limited to a CPI increase of a 3.5%, so that's where we'd like to see them. And this all leads to a combined total expense growth on average of 2.8% per year. So with that, just the status quo baseline flat growth forecast, this is what our revenues to expenditures look like. Again, this is before contributions to capital infrastructure projects or other major changes in programming. So the net operating surplus waivers around $1 million each year. And though that may seem like a lot, it never meets our required reserve, which is 25% of the operating expenses. So we do have a surplus. It does continue, and it feeds into it, but it never meets what we need for a required surplus. So again, these projections do not include major equipment or infrastructure, but we did want to include our vehicle replacement schedules because that's kind of been a prime thing that we wanted to make sure we were replacing gas vehicles with EV vehicles as much as possible as well as planning those out. So we did include those in our baseline projections. So those are included in here as well as minor equipment and supplies used in operations, which include our computer replacement schedule as well as our network infrastructure, which is our switches and servers, that is included, as well as the PD consortium costs, which is the field hardware and dispatch equipment. So though they aren't considered really capital projects, they are intensive expenditures that are included within the budget and the forecasts. So on a comparative basis, I just thought it was interesting to have this graph that presents the proposed tentative CIP plan, right? We're still fine-tuning this. It's not finalized. We'll be bringing it to council in two weeks. But bringing that versus the total available funds for the project within the general fund. So if we were just funding these within the general fund surplus, for the first two years, we don't meet the capital requirements for these projects just as proposed. So what this shows is two things. Primarily, the importance of project timing. Unfortunately, we can't fiscally afford to do all the projects that we want to do every year, and things have to be prioritized or delayed. And secondly, we do have other revenue sources, like the special revenue funds, like the gas tax, parks, and streets, Measure M, along with local, state, and federal grants that really help some of these gaps for funding. And they have become kind of critical to us getting some of these infrastructure and projects done. But those do require staff, management, and additional reporting, as well as us reaching out and trying to get those grants. So that's where we definitely have had key input to get those attained and managed within the city. So moving on to another scenario, so what happens when we alter that baseline projection with our scenario two? So we have a new revenue source that's added to the city, and we have a hotel. And this assumption is that, within the projection, is described within the report on packet page 14. So for the hotel, we have what's already planned here in the city, and it adds a new local revenue tax called TOT or transient occupancy tax, which is a 10% tax currently. Overall, we did not project expenditures to change. It will, of course, probably require additional staff time, new contract possibly for annual audits. But overall, graphically, you can see the net surplus is better. But again, each year, we never meet the required reserve in any year. Lastly, I wanted to show you the worst-case scenario for our forecast. Please note again, this is not an expectation for 22 or 2324. We're not seeing anything in the economy that says we're heading right into a recession, but interstates are changing, activities are changing. You know, it is something to just keep in mind of where we have been and plan, know that it's there and as a plan. So what is included with this is that the fund balance currently available would have the funds to just maintain operations using that reserve funds that we already have. It would get us through 202526. And then our reserve balance would be depleted. And so that would mean a complete change in operations. We wouldn't, you know, we would have to make some drastic changes in order to continue operations if this kind of thing happened. We do have supplemental funds now, but for just basic operations, again, before any capital projects, that's where we would be. So this graphic just depicts the operating surplus or deficit between the three different scenarios as outlined within the report. So you can see the hotel trends right above, kind of falls along the baseline but just above it. And then we have the baseline in the middle, and of course, the recession, where you just can never catch up. So in summary, we just really wanted to provide this long-range financial plan as a planning tool. It's really just looking at what happens if, when, and how we would deal with it in those situations. That's a further discussion to be had. Katati's challenges are not unique. Any city who finds themselves in a recession point would have to be making some very dire decisions. I know lots of cities, even during COVID, were doing significant layoffs or other changes where we luckily were not in that situation based on the sales tax and the revenues that we have that worked for the situation at that point in time. Significant economic downturn would be, would demand a drastic operating reductions or changes. Economic development and special revenues really are critical to our infrastructure programs, streets and parks, as well as Measure S. Continued funding through Measure S is critical to our core operations and these infrastructure programs. So really, that is the highlight of the report and the presentation, and so I'd be happy to take any questions. Questions?
I'm just wondering, Angela, if you could clarify the reserve issue. So the way you were describing it, you were saying that our policy requires a 25% surplus every year, but that's not my understanding of our requirement. Our requirement is 25% of annual expenses in a reserve account.
Yes, it requires 25% of our operating expenses in a reserve account. And so if we just took the surplus for the year, so the revenue minus expenses, that amount wouldn't meet the required reserve.
But the surplus never meets the required reserve. The reserve is the bank balance, which we have. We've currently got considerably over our 25% required reserve. I mean, you need to add enough to cover.
25%.
Right, to have 25%.
Right. So maybe I'm speaking to it incorrectly in that we would be taking out a balance from our reserve in order to meet that 20. So our operations don't meet that 25% dollar amount of operations. So it never meets that 25%.
You're saying it's like on a year-to-year basis, doesn't meet 25%? So you're slowly eroding your account balance? Right? Is that?
No, it doesn't work that way. I mean, if our constant expenses are 10 million and our constant revenue is 10 million, and we've got 2.5 million in the bank, we're fine. We don't need a surplus every year as long as we've got enough in the reserve account. I just, I feel like we're scaring people that somehow, we're not actually, if you look at the ending fund balance, it's going up. I mean, except in the worst-case scenario. It's going up every year. It's well over 25%, and the percent is actually increasing every year.
Yes, that's before capital. Yes, that is absolutely correct. Yes, so that is. I'm obviously speaking to that incorrectly. Yes, we do have supplemental fund now. So we are using that fund balance, and we have that fund balance to meet our reserves. But just looking at our operations, if we didn't have that fund balance that we continue to build up, we wouldn't meet the reserve. I think that's what I was trying to speak to. I think that's what I was trying to speak to.
Okay, but that's what, yeah. But that's what a reserve is, is it's a fund you carry forward, not that you repeat each year. Okay, thanks.
Yes, I had a question about, I know that since I've been here, at least, we have budgeted for full employment every year. And we generally don't fill all the positions, and we have some savings. So my question is, do all three of these models assume full employment, like full filling of all the positions?
Yes, because they are based on the '22, '23 adopted budget, which assumes full employment, full staffing levels. And so that would presume that those are filled for each of those years.
Okay, so we would have a little bit even more of a cushion if our current pattern of carrying a few positions open on average continued? Okay, thank you.
It does not include any new positions that are proposed for the '23, '24 year, though. So I don't have the differential on that right now, but yeah.
Okay, did you have a question?
I wanted to ask, just because titles can be a little vague. Do we have a grant writer for the city? Is there someone whose job is to write grants?
No, each department kind of takes it on themselves to find out what grants are out there and available. Even the city manager, I mean, we all kind of feel like, I mean, council, council, you know, is intertwined, and they get the know-how and go, hey, I just heard about this, I think it's worth applying for, you know. And so it really is a, we're doing the footwork. And it all comes from the departments, and then we manage the finance and accounting piece of it and reporting for it. Otherwise, it's department by department.
Okay, well, I wonder if that might be a role that would be worth having because it pays for itself, right? If they end up getting enough money for the city, you pay them out of that money eventually. But, okay, so, and then just the question of reserve, I wasn't completely clear on that either. So it's my understanding that the surplus really doesn't have anything to do with the reserve, unless it's depleted and you need to keep adding to it, is that correct? Like, right now, we have the 25%, and the surplus can be added to it because if we're making more, you know, as long as the operating, as long as it keeps at 25%, then it's fine. And it is fine right now, correct?
Yes, that is correct. Sorry, that's, yes, because of the fund balance that we've already built, it is fine, yes.
Right, and just, you know, inflation or whatever else will need to keep adding to it. But, you know, other than that, we're good.
Yes, yes, sorry for that confusion.
No, no, thank you.
Yeah, I just had one question. In the scenarios that you presented, Angela, you had the worst-case scenario, which is the 2008 recession. Were there any other scenarios besides that more of a mid-impact that were considered? Or did we just go straight to the doomsday kind of scenario?
That was really it. I mean, we could have done another scenario, but it would have just been another set of numbers. That would have been a, what if it is in between, you know? And so it would have just been another set of numbers to look at. So you can presume that a not-as-worse would be the middle of the middle of those lines. So again, if we don't have any revenue growth like we're having, we still won't have, we'll have it even farther down compared to the first scenario. If I go back here. So that just kind of follows right along the bottom of the line. So if you have something worse, I mean, we're going to eventually get to a deficit. But it's just all about timing at that point.
And then one other question that I had is, when you were discussing the assumptions, the revenue and also the operating expense forecast assumptions, there's a difference of like 0.5% between those two averages. That 0.5%, is that something that we would kind of use for reserves? Or does it even out, does it balance out? What I'm saying is, when I'm looking at the average revenue growth is 3.3 over 10 years, and then a combined total expense growth of 2.8 per year, average kind of over that timeframe, that's 0.5? Is that put into reserves, or is that?
No, so this again is all before any capital or infrastructure projects happen. So every year, like in this next slide, we have a lot of capital projects that we have planned and programmed, and we use a lot of general funds to kind of supplant that. And so it's then, once we take the operations for the transfers out for the capital, that we really pay attention to that fund balance component. Because it's, we want to do all these other projects. We want to improve our streets, our infrastructure, our parks, our, you know, stormwater systems, all these other things. And so that's where we look at the fund balance in any reserves, is after that capital project. And so that's that 25% we're looking at for the fund balance of the operating expenses that we have to keep in reserves.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'm a little concerned about the scenario three, the way that it was laid out. I almost feel like it's not really very realistic, having been here when we went through this last episode. When it says, from an expense perspective in this example, all it says is, we're not going to do capital projects. The reality is that if we actually go into recession, it's much, much more significant than that. It's not just not doing capital. It's that we have many more staff than we can afford. I mean, that is our reality, and picking and choosing which services can we barebone. And as was pointed out, there are different levels of that, you know, could be mild, could be, you know, not mild. So my concern with this is, I really feel like what we need to have, because this is a reality that could happen to us, is that having been through those painful times and on the fly, if you will, trying to pick and choose what we're going to do, I feel like what we should be doing now is creating a plan with a priority order, if you will, for lack of a better term, that kind of says, well, if it gets this bad, you know, here's kind of what we're looking at. If it gets this bad, here's kind of what we're looking at. So that both the council and the public and the staff can see what we would have to look at depending upon levels of recessions. Because I will tell you that in 2009, we cut 25% of our staff, and the few people that remained took either a 14% or 15% pay cut. And we were barebones there. And so I think it's helpful for people to understand that and for us to kind of think about it in advance. You know, we don't have to lay it in stone, but just so we have those discussions so that we're kind of on the same page, you know, if and when we were ever to get to that point. Two cents on that. So what do we need to do with this? Just receive it? Do we?
Yes, this is just a receive of the report, getting comments, feedback, direction, if any. And I think that's.
So a little English teacher correction for you. On packet page 27, MOUs plural does not have an apostrophe. Thank you. And I think the other ones are a different section. The expenditure highlights departments, that's not yours, right? Packet page 65, was that part of your presentation also?
Yeah.
It is or is not?
It's not this one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So just in response to your thinking about how do we plan for a scenario like scenario three, I'm not a big fan of prioritizing positions and sort of publicizing, like, these would be the first people to go. And that sounds like a bad plan to put out there. But something we could talk about that seems like it might be useful is, what's our approach to using the accumulated fund balance? You know, at what rate do we need to think about making cuts? You know, what's the, basically, the amortization of the fund balance that we want to think about? Because we're currently, you know, 7 million or so above minimum required reserve, maybe 5 million. I don't know what it is right now. And we could sort of talk about what should the city's approach be in the event that revenue dips below expenses? You know, we probably don't want, given that fund balance, we probably don't want to do immediate cuts to keep expenses below revenues. But we need to have a plan for how tightly those have to track.
Right.
So we don't get to the scenario like the current, you know, like this projection just says. Keep spending as if we still are getting the same revenue.
Right.
While revenues dive, and then in year three, you know, we fall off a cliff. So that would be an interesting discussion to have.
And as you saw in the graphs, what happens then is it takes us that many more years to dig back out. So, and yes, I wasn't speaking of positions. But we do have to have a healthy discussion around, you know, really, what are our bare minimum services? And we may have, you know, some of those, and this is just an example, I'm not suggesting this. But we might have to make tough decisions like, can we afford the rate of money that we're putting in to, say, the safety? We might not be able to do that. But those are kind of discussions that we would kind of have to decide whether that's core. It has to stay no matter what. Or, you know, what things kind of can we give and take on? That's all, because, yeah, it doesn't get pretty. That's all I can say, yeah.
So I really don't like naming particular programs, even if it's just hypothetical right now. But I wondered if the discussion and the idea about how to spend on the fund balance, is that something that could live in our financial policies somewhere? And maybe something that we could add as a discussion item to work on that this year?
I think that would be a great thing that we could add.
I think it's both, you know, what thresholds would be sort of flags as to, you know, whether it's fund balance or fund balance and something else, you know, expenditures exceeding revenues? That's an obvious one. You know, things like that, that start turning things upside down or are projected to be there quickly. So as we're looking at budgets and as we're forecasting, those kind of flags, that would be sort of early warning signs on that side, and also, big picture, what kind of, you know, what kind of things would we do? I mean, there's some, you know, there's some things that we could say, like, okay, capital probably should pause. One-time expenditures, we probably should pause that. Maybe, you know, next down the line is, you know, something, it's going to start, you know, coming up with general priorities in terms of things that we would look at. And not anything, I don't think that we would say, this is absolutely how you have to do it. But this is just a roadmap for, just to kind of get you thinking on what might make the most sense.
Equipment purchases, vehicle, you know, we might say, you know, let's delay. You know, can we delay these things? Stuff like that.
Makes sense, yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, for me, and I think this is what Angela was trying to say earlier with the reserve thing, was, you know, the name of the game is to keep revenues above expenditures and have a surplus each year so that you can use that money for programs or for capital or for whatever. You know, when your revenue line starts touching your expenditure line, nothing good becomes of that. Because then you're starting to pull from reserves exclusively. And if it goes below, then you're really in trouble, because you are the definition of upside down, so.
And I like the thought of the thresholds, because you do kind of have to manage what it is that you're going to do because you also don't want to use up all your reserve. And yeah, we may have to dip lower than the 25%, which we wouldn't want to do. But, you know, you also don't want to let it go on and then take 10 years to get back in the positive again. That's just not prudent, so.
And the other thing I'd like to comment is just the, you know, not waiting until expenditures, you know, are higher than revenues. But like, when we see it moving in that direction, we start doing something. We don't wait until it's already, you know, in a deficit.
And I think that's what, that a plan would kind of give us those, you know, triggers or whatever. So do we want to move to the next item? Is that where we're headed?
Yes, I think we'll move on to the next item, which is the revised city goals for the fiscal year, which I think Deanian will be presenting.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, members of the council. It's actually, it's a fairly quick presentation, but we did have a, as you all know, we had a discussion about the goals and objectives at the strategic planning meeting. And what's in the packet is, is on packet page 36 and 37, is the updated goals and objectives. There was a sort of a general conversation about it, and this, both the red line, the red text and the strike through were an attempt to try to address that. So under goal two, it talks about wildfire preparation and adaptation. But there's also, what was pointed out during strategic planning, that is also under goal three, item C. It also includes preparing for wildfires. So that was stricken in goal two. And then goal two is more flushed out. It was just a goal before, and so it's flushed out with some objective language to try to pursue that goal. The climate action plan was cited as something that would be good to cite and follow as an action plan. So that's in there as objective A. And then objective B is simply communications, improving communications with the community and implement measures. So.
Comment to just about the grammar of it. It's just worded a little differently than all the other objectives. So maybe instead of saying city to continue, just start with continue, yeah. Just to make it match the format of the other ones. And then for the second one, objective B under goal two, I'd probably change adaptation of to adaptation to. We're really adapting to this. We're not going to adapt climate change successfully on our own. And then I just had a question about that one, because in my mind, I had been thinking about, you know, addressing the impacts of climate change, but this one seems to be equally addressing impact, but also communication. So I just wasn't quite clear on what the communication piece of that, what you're envisioning.
I think it was just generally to communicate to the community ways that they can help. So whether that's, you know, switching out gas water heaters, electric, you know, heat pumps or things like, or electric, sorry, electric water heaters, or heat pumps instead of air conditioners.
Okay.
That kind of thing, you know.
Okay, I really like that idea. I'm trying to think how to word it a little differently so that reads a little more clearly. Any ideas?
Well, so we're not actually adopting these tonight, right? So I'm happy to give this to staff to clarify the wording a little bit. But the things that the city manager just named are mitigation, not adaptation. And so if we want this objective to include both, then we need to add mitigation to it. I agree with the vice mangers, slight changes to make it parallel. And also, it currently says adaption needs to be adaptation. So, yeah, I like those objectives, I think. I'm happy to have those added. How prominent is the climate action plan on our website or in other? I must admit, I'm not terribly familiar with it.
Yeah, yeah, it's funny you say that. So after we had this conversation at strategic planning, it got us thinking about, as Noah was just saying, it's on the planning, the community development page, just in the list of other documents that have been approved by the city or adopted by the city. But especially in light of this conversation, it got us thinking internally about, we really should elevate this and create a section on our website that's really about this. So it's not just one of many other planning level plans.
That could be the first task of the communications part of this objective, right?
I like.
Yeah, beef it up. It's prominent, and things like, so there are lots of adaptation. It's prominent and things like, so there are lots of adaptation measures that are also potentially mitigation measures, you know, increasing your insulation. So you don't need the big air conditioner and things like that are both. Yeah, okay, thanks.
And would something like the plan that we were just talking about, would that be encompassed in the promote a balanced budget? Would that kind of fall under there?
The climate action plan?
No, the fiscal plan for emergencies, would that, is that where that would kind of fall?
I think so, yeah. Long-term vitality of the city and promote a balanced budget, yeah.
All right, I just wanted to make sure it was kind of those words.
It'd be goal 1A.
Okay, thank you. I didn't think that it needed its own thing, but I just wanted to be sure you guys knew what was that.
Yeah, well, I mean, if the, you know, if the finances are upside down, they're really, can't do anything else. The whole show stops, so.
Yeah. Okay, so anything else on this item? Do you have what you need?
I do, yeah, I do.
I just have a question on timeline. When do we, I kind of thought we were adopting these tonight. So when are we actually adopting these goals?
So we will make those further revisions and they typically come back in the budget book as a final, you know, final goals and objectives. And that's adopted, obviously, the whole thing is.
And just a quick logistical question. I do have two things for the strategic planning that I had to miss. So I just want to make sure that at some point that's said. I'm not sure when the right time to do that would be.
When we get into the budget, we have some updated budget sheets that we'll talk through. And so if there's anything else that was missed, we can talk about it then.
Oh, well, I'm talking about, yeah, okay.
You're not talking about goals and objectives, you're talking about projects or something like that. Yeah, yeah, so we'll go through the department sheets when we do the budget conversation.
Thank you.
So do you have what you need for this particular item?
I do, yes, thank you.
Okay, so then we will move on to the next item, which is the budget study session for the general fund. Guessing this is, oh, Damian's going to start.
Starts with me because actually we're gonna.
Starts with you, okay.
We're gonna do a little detour first before we get into Angelo's presentation. It's related though, it's not totally unrelated.
Okay, not a bad detour.
Yeah. Okay, so I just wanted to, this is a very truncated version of the full slide deck because I don't want to subject you guys to 50 pages of insurance slides. But it's much more concise, I try to make it concise. So Allianz is, they're one of our, they're a big player in the insurance industry. They do a lot of our reinsurance. So in other words, just as a quick refresher, the way most cities, including us, insure ourselves is we have a deductible typically, which is out of pocket when there's some claim of some type. And right above the deductible is the pool layer, they call it the pool layer. So we belong to CIRA. And so CIRA retains a certain amount of coverage, depends on the line of coverage. But we have like liability, property, cyber, you know, workers, there's different lines. So they retain what they call the pool layer. And any claims that are more expensive than our deductible, but within the pool layer, then it's just paid out of sort of CIRA's pool of money. And then if the claim gets more expensive than the pool, then there's different layers of, you know, like additional insurance, like they call it reinsurance. So it's, so Allianz would be like one of the carriers, for example, that would have a policy that would go maybe from a million to five million. So they, any claims that hit that layer, they pay for that portion of the claim. And if it goes over five million, for example, up to like 40 million, then there'd be another insurer that might carry that claim. So it's just, you can think of it like a cake, right? There's a bunch of different layers and the more expensive the claim gets, the more layers it ends up hitting. So that's how our insurance works in a real basic way. Anyway, Allianz is one of the reinsurers that we and many other people use. So this original slide deck was presented by Rob Lowe. They can afford celebrities. You just get me tonight, so I apologize. Yeah, all right. So that was my bad joke for the night. So insurance is getting, I've been saying this for a couple of years, but it continues to be true. Insurance is getting very battered by a lot of things. And this slide has a lot of, just sort of some main categories of it. You know, pandemic-related issues, aging infrastructure causing, you know, maybe failures and damage, all sorts of geopolitical turmoil, climate change causing large catastrophic losses, inflation, which generally drives up the cost of fixing things that break, whole mass shootings, that kind of speaks for itself, natural disasters, part of climate change, social inflation and nuclear verdicts. I'll get into what that means more in a little bit later. Cyber attacks and changing legislation and there's other factors as well. But there's a lot of, so every major insurance company, they try to mitigate their risk by insuring not only different lines of insurance, so like auto or general liability or workers' comp, kind of spreading the risk across different lines of insurance. They also spread the risk by not over-insuring in anyone like geographic areas. So they might have a certain amount of money they want to put into California and a certain amount in Europe or a certain amount, they spread it around so that if there's any single large catastrophic claim, whether that's like a natural disaster that's geographically based or if it's a giant like liability claim or something, their exposure is just mitigated. Kind of like, you know, in our, sort of our worlds, you know, when you invest in mutual funds, right? You don't put all your money in one stock, you spread it out among different stocks and different categories and you hope that not everything gets hit all at the same time. So in the market conditions, so liability, liability insurance, that's, there's been, in California, there's been pullback and withdrawals for a couple of reasons. Well, it's generally, but also California is no different. So they haven't been, there's, in a lot of these lines of insurance, they haven't really been making money for out of the last five years. So they've been exceedingly large claims. And also they're, you know, trying to mitigate their risk by pulling out of liability because of the large claims. Property capacity reductions, so we had some insurers just pull out of the market entirely. So you have, we had like a 15 to 30% reduction in insurers' insurance capacity. And in natural disasters, wildfires, so forth, are continuing, have continued to be a problem in recent years. Cyber capacity is shrinking and there's been some very large cyber claims. Insurers, again, as I mentioned before, they had negligible profit last year and there was $112 billion in global insured catastrophic losses in 2022. It's the third worst year on record. Workers' compensation is the one area that's relatively stable. That's, I guess that's something to be happy about. But the retained layer may be experiencing increased claims volumes. That's like the CIRA layer, more workers' comp claims are hitting those. And then on the other end of it, historically low interest rates. They're raising now, but historically in the last several years, they've been low. And so that's where insurance companies make some of their profit is by investing some of the money. And they haven't been able to, just like the conversations we had about pension. Our pensions, a lot of the money that they plan for future pension obligations are from interest profits, basically that they make, interest returns. And so if, just like that, if insurance companies don't make decent returns on the money that they have held, then it hampers their profits. Increased pattern of major property catastrophes, and we'll talk about that more in a minute, but it just seems that it's the new normal. It's been that way since 2017, really, there's been just, you know, year after year of, and not just globally, just giant losses because of natural disasters, mostly climate-related. So it's been kind of, I mean, so I'm in these CIRA meetings and you have these insurance brokers come in and tell you about how badly they're getting battered and how they're having to change their models because all their old models are broke. This was five years ago, they were starting to talk about this, you know, and you see, it's just kind of funny because you see on the news, people are debating like, is climate change real or not? It's like, these people have moved way past that, that was like, that was like last decade's debate. It's been, it's old, old news for these people. So they're trying to adjust the models to account for these giant claims that they hadn't seen historically. And they hit, also, property losses continue to get more expensive, I think, because of just the cost of everything. Social inflation, litigation financing is something new, that's kind of novel. Where now, so social inflation, I'll talk about this more in a minute, but social inflation is basically jury verdicts are becoming a lot more expensive. They've, for whatever reason, whether juries think it's because insurance companies are paying for it or it's because it's like the reality TV-ish of our world, they think that people deserve giant payouts and so that's what they've been seeing. And in fact, it's been, just in this last year, CIRA had some claims in some of the other member cities where they were like so wildly out of line that the judge had to step in and knock the jury verdicts down because it just had no basis in anything. And, but the point being that there's, it's just getting much more expensive. And litigation financing is, now there's people that are getting into the financing of litigation because apparently that gets good returns to finance people to litigate other people because it profits. And ransomware, so in 2021, $6 trillion, this is globally, impact from ransomware losses and expecting $10 trillion globally by 2025. So. I won't go through all these, I'll spare you, but basically just a lot of large catastrophic, so cat losses mean catastrophic losses, across the world for a variety of reasons. This was starting in 2017, so from 2017 to 2020, there were $66 billion, and in excess of $66 billion in losses due to natural disasters. 2021, this just shows the 20 separate billion dollar plus losses in the United States in that year. 2022, this is 18 separate billion dollar weather-related climate losses. So anyway, you get the point, a lot of big losses. And I think I touched on most of these, but reduced capacity. So we're generally seeing in the market that there's just less people insuring. And if they are insuring, their deductibles are getting higher. So you have to pay more the claim yourself. They're creating more policy exclusions, so they're excluding certain types of claims more and more to limit their liability, which means that you either need to buy separate riders for additional money to pay for that type of claim, or you just accept the fact that you won't have coverage in that area, depending on what it is. And then, of course, the policies themselves are getting more expensive. So the coverage is shrinking, the policies are getting more expensive. It's just becoming an annual issue for us. And I think I covered all of these. Yeah, so I won't, anyway, I won't go through these individually. This is a chart just of jury awards, just a large jump, especially since 2016. And this is liability insurance. This is just a chart that's just showing that there's an imbalance in capacity for insurance. So there's less insurers insuring in the market, so more people are scrambling for a limited supply of insurers. And, all right, so on property insurance, this is, what we're seeing is due to all these factors that I talked about, for non-catastrophic businesses that haven't experienced catastrophic losses, they're seeing 15 to 25% increases again this year. Businesses that were exposed to catastrophic losses are seeing 45 to 100% increases in insurance. And the average is about 50%. So again, we're seeing significantly increased rates, higher attachment points, basically higher deductibles, right? And restricted terms and coverages. So basically, they're trying to figure out how they're going to make money in the insurance market. And then for cyber insurance, they're expecting 15 to 25% increases in cyber insurance for good risks and of course worse, like more, higher increases for worse risks. And they're also requiring certain amounts of basic standards like multi-factor authentication. So in other words, they won't even insure you, you're uninsurable unless you have certain measures in place, such as multi-factor authentication, data backups, endpoint detection and employee education. So we, I mean, we have all these things, but for people that don't, they're funding themselves without cyber insurance coming up here next year. And then I won't, again, I won't go through this, just generally reiterates, except for the workers' compensation line of insurance, basically everything's going up in cost. Retentions or deductibles are going up and coverages in many cases going down through policy exclusions. So we'll talk sort of generally about it as we get into the general fund study session. But the insurance numbers are really just an initial estimate that are in here now. We haven't even got actual estimates from CIRA yet because the insurance companies are tending to wait longer and longer. Last year, they didn't actually write our policy, not our policy, but CIRA's policy for all the different 50-something municipalities until like literally like the week before the fiscal year started. So they were just giving us estimates and the estimates got progressively better, I guess, as we got closer to July 1. But they didn't actually lock anything in until after we'd all adopted budgets. And it was like, well, let's hope it is what they say it is because otherwise we're going to be in trouble, so. So anyway, just suffice it to say that what we have in the budget is just an estimate. But it's subject to change when we get to that.
Damian, if it was really significant, would we do an immediate budget adjustment or, okay?
If it was significant enough, we would just come back to council and discuss.
Rather than wait till midterm if it was significant? Because I do remember last year was like, I think at 11:00 PM, it was like crazy.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Questions?
Can I just quickly respond before we go on to the main presentation? The city is certainly, city and CIRA are over a barrel, like we have to, like we don't get to pick our insurance rates. I don't accept as gospel what the big insurers tell us is the reason for the rates. So huge consolidation in the insurance industry, big insurance, a quick search says big insurance had record profits in 2022. So they're always going to justify higher rates. And so while I know there are certain, you know, certainly many more climate impacts that are costing them money and things like that, I think a huge amount of what we're seeing is a result of consolidation and gouging by large companies.
The insurance companies for certain are looking to make sure that they protect their profit margins.
And make them bigger.
And, yeah, well, yeah, and when they see big, I mean, we are for sure also on, you know, we're out, just in the CIRA pool, we've seen really large losses, verdicts for things. So it does exist, but the insurance companies do respond by not just accepting it and keeping the rates the same.
And it is like everything else cyclical because I can remember when you couldn't buy workers' comp insurance. So it all, all the lines end up, you know, kind of going through this cycle. So it just happens to be, you know, these particular lines at this point in time, so.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be forever, I think, just sort of rebalancing their business model, you know.
They'll adjust their rates and they'll adjust their models and then it'll be okay on that line and another line will go crazy, so. And we can do nothing about mother nature.
Yeah, I guess it's always a balance, isn't it? Because if you start pushing rates up too much, then businesses can't afford to operate any longer. And then that causes bad things to happen for the insurance company, like legislation or new, like government-funded insurance or something like that, that would then impact their ability to make money. So I think they try to not have giant increases every year.
Yeah, two things, I want to sort of back up what Ben was saying. This, you know, it's interesting, they use the word negligible. know, it's interesting, they use the word negligible profit, like, I question that word, word choice. But then the other thing I just wanted to offer is, I think the 100% that was quoted is, has got to be an average, because my wife works for an organization that has acreage in Marin, and theirs went up 800%. Actually, the people who originally insured them disappeared, they had to go and find new ones, and the new one was, like I said, 800%, she's been getting calls from other organizations like that, you know, scrambling to try and get it because it's, you know, it's really insane right now. So hopefully, ours, that doesn't happen to us.
Yeah, no, I hope not, I hope not, I, I mean, certainly after the, like, after the wildfires, I heard a lot of people just couldn't get re-insured when their policies came up, and then they had to go to whoever would insure them, and that was inevitably much higher than the previous rate that they had paid.
Fair plan is not a good thing.
Yeah.
Sylvia, did you have a question? Oh, yeah, are we, okay, did you want to move on then?
Yeah, actually, so before we get into the main report, I also wanted just to go over the, the updated departmental sheets.
Okay.
So, I thought I'd just go through these one by one, and we can stop after each one and have a conversation.
Okay.
So I'll start with administrative, and, and I'll just tell you two, generally, these are the exact same sheets that were shown during strategic planning. The changes are, the, the new, I should say, the new items that were added are in red, in red font, so you can quickly identify those. And so, you know, we talked about the minutes earlier, the things that translated into projects from the conversation ended up in there, in red. Alright, so with administrative services, there was nothing, nothing added, other than the conversation we just had, which was maybe financial policy addition, for how to deal with recessions or shortfalls in revenue compared to expenditures. So that, that was just, that was just discussed tonight, and we can add that in, that would most likely end up in this department. In this, so in this department, a lot of these, I mean, virtually all of these are sort of required, sort of things to do, so there's no, I, I don't really need to have a conversation about relative priority of these, I think they're all, just need to get done, for the most part. Sorry, Angela.
You're the city manager, you tell me what we need to get done, but no, yeah, we, these are really priority for our department as well, and I think they align with the city goals. And so we would like to see them all done, of course, everything's subject to other things that become priority, but I know, I, I think we just want to, our single priority that is really on there, besides what we brought up this evening, is the evaluation of utility bills on a monthly basis, and going out to our community and getting input on kind of a customer service survey, and what, what we would like to see improvements around the utility bills. So, that was kind of be our, our priority for that, and if there's others that were within there, then we'd like to hear.
Are we good on this one? Yeah? Alright.
Just a quick question, I mean, if these all need to get done, but we're over by a little bit, what, what do we do?
Yeah, we would, I mean, we would, so, some things like the, like maybe the TOT tax documentation process that might delay, because we probably won't have a hotel, you know, doing TOT, we'd like to get it done this year, so it's in, in advance of a hotel, but in the event that it's not, we could just push that off a little bit, so there's timing things we can do, a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
And, and also, I'll just say that this is just a, it's not an exact science, it's rough, you know, estimates at time. Alright, so community development, so here we added the, there's a conversation last time about adding objective design guidelines for Plex housing and single families to respond to any SB9-type projects that might come in. And, these, these are, I think, completely up for discussion in terms of relative priority, if the council has any. We'd love to hear. And one thing I will add is, the digital, the one caveat is update the digital permit management software, that's going to, I think, happen regardless, just because we're in the process of doing it already, but.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I have a question, under emergency response, it says zero FTE, does that mean that nothing's being done on it, or, right now it doesn't require any work? Because my question was as far as making sure some of the Spanish information for emergency response, if, if there's any time allocated to that work.
Yeah, how that's, how that's estimated for this purpose is, we look at the last year's time cards, and we just do an average, there was some time, I'm sure, spent, but it wasn't enough to round up, because most of the emergency response time was focused around, I think, my department with COVID measures, you know, policies and plans and that sort of thing, in this last year. And so this is, this isn't necessarily a projection moving forward, this is just an estimate of last year's time, and sort of how that, kind of how much day-to-day activities took, before you even start to think about projects.
Yes, he wasn't open last year.
And it wasn't, yeah, we didn't open it.
For three years.
Yeah, yeah. So emergency response can vary, depending on what the year looks like.
Yes. Well, I, I'd just like to discuss, what is the, what are your thoughts about how lean your department is right now? Because it, it seems like we always have new things coming up mid-year that planning has to address, and they're always urgent and important, and it's, it's hard for me to look at this and say, okay, well, let's cut out point, you know, point 6.5 of these, they all look important, so.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. I kind of pride myself on running a lean department, we, we do a lot, but what that means is you, as much as we absolutely want to hear your priorities, you will potentially see things come out of order if we have an opportunity to add to, like, an ordinance is a good example, and I think the Filetti Ranch ordinance, even though it's a little bit of a rough process, we got a lot of, of kind of accomplishments done with that one, one effort, even though, I mean, it took us a while. So if we, you'll see when we bring the, as an example, when we bring the downtown specific plan ordinance, which will be coming in the coming months, we're going to pick off some of the low-hanging fruit from the housing element goals, because it's an ordinance, and it's state laws mandating, and we're just going to fold some of that work into that ordinance. So we look at those opportunities. The other thing is, certain grant opportunities are anticipated to be coming forward, and if, if we get adequate grant funding, that we could then pivot a project to be managed primarily by a consultant rather than in-house staff, then I like to have kind of maybe optimistic list of projects to be able to pick up those opportunities as well. As long as the council's understanding that we may not get to all of these because we're kind of overbudgeted, at the same time, I look for opportunities to be able to do that, and as priorities arise, we look for ways to best fit those into our current workloads.
And unfortunately, we never know what the state's going to do to us. So this one that's monitor and implement new state housing legislation, could be nothing, could be, you know, 1,000 more bills, you, you just don't know what the legislation.
It's, it's inevitable that we're not going to know what's going to happen three or six months from now, and other priorities will come up, but at least at this point in time, you know, what the council feels are like some top priorities that we should try to keep focused on, if there are certain things.
And it seems to me that the bike and ped up, plan update, we've kicked that down the road multiple years, it doesn't seem, you know, prudent for us to keep kicking it, at least, I think.
Yeah, that was going to be my question on that, yeah. And plus, we're doing that collaboration with the county right now, there's a collab?
That's correct.
Okay. So will that kind of speed up the process for the plan, or?
That is the goal. So I, so I will say, when we originally kicked it off, I think it was in 2020, and we just did not, we were not able to get traction on it with all the various competing priorities. Then in 2021, the council, or I'm sorry, the county SCTA was going for a grant, we were hoping to be able to ride their coattails, they did not get the grant, the grant has been funded, and Cattati is specifically called out as the first of the five jurisdictions to receive their plan, as a part of the overall SCTA county project, and our staff has been sitting in with the county staff, reviewing the RFPs, selecting the consultant, so we're really working lockstep with them. And then we also have identified the funding that the council already has approved for this project, and the county was somewhat short on their overall budget, so I think it was a very good opportunity for us to, to kind of leverage our situation and their situation to rise to the top.
So, I have, I just have three things. So one, I'm really delighted it's already on here, so that's great, which is the investigate models of civilian oversight for police, that's, that was one of my main ones. The other one, there's another one that I think is probably in yours, Noah, which would be to review whether or not the roundabout ordinance might be discussed, addressed, considered.
Can, I just have a question, can we really do anything with that?
Well, that's the question, so if they can, if we can find out, if, if and what can be done.
Okay.
Like, you know, because if, if nothing can be done, then that's good to know.
No, I guess, I'll state it another way, my understanding was that because it was a citizen initiative, that the only way that it can undo itself is another citizen initiative.
Well, it can only be undone by a vote.
Right.
Of the city, of the citizens. So, so it could be another citizen initiative, or the city could put it on the ballot, but either way, it has to be, has to be voted on, yeah.
Okay, but it is, okay, so it doesn't have to be a citizen initiative? Okay.
No.
Has to be citizen voted, but not necessarily initiated.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, but that has other downsides, but yeah.
Well, that's why I'm saying, investigate it, right, to find out. And then, the third thing, and this is the big one, is investigate what would need to happen in order for us to have a library in Cattati. And I think it hits on, actually, every single one of our goals, because if we had this library with, you know, community space, we could run senior programs out of it, could be a warming and a cooling place, when, in our crazy climate weather, and could potentially also have like a maker's space, and a gathering place for community, and, you know, for the whole equity thing, you know, for kids who are in school and don't have the funds for their own Wi-Fi or computers, libraries provide that, and, you know, the nearest library is, can be two miles away for some of our kids. And I do believe that's a huge equity issue for our citizens, and would very much like to look into how we might go about having a library in Cattati.
Okay.
I have a question on the Santero specific plan. I know we've approved Cattati stations, that can proceed without us adjusting anything? Is that, is that a correct assumption? Okay, but it does mean that nothing else can happen until we address that issue?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a little bit of a misnomer, so there's a, there's a few, it gets a little wonky with planning, but there's a few competing elements. So one, the number of residential units was dictated by the SEQA document, so there's no density issues, there's no density called out in the Santero plan as, you know, X units per acre, but the environmental analysis said we will have 198 units, and no more. So we've now approved and built 198 units in Santero Way. So the current SEQA analysis doesn't allow that. However, that SEQA analysis also anticipated up to 300,000 square feet of commercial space being built in that same neighborhood. So there was an impact analysis of more development, just not residential. So if a project was proposed today, before we update the plan, it would have to address that issue with both plan compliance and SEQA. So it adds complexity to the planning process for a development that did not want to.
And, and also emergency access.
And, yes, thank you. So there's a separate competing issue, is since the fire issues have challenged Sonoma County, basically, starting with Tubbs Fire in 2017, there was an amendment to the fire code that says any project over 50 units has to provide a secondary means of emergency access. That does not exist in Santero currently, we've discussed with the fire department various ways to meet that, we think we can, but it's not clearly delineated as of today in the plan.
And does that impact Cattati stations as well, or?
It does not.
It does not?
Does not.
Because it's already entitled?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they can, they came, we, there was a conversation about it, and they came to sort of an agreement on how that's going to be managed, but that's, the fire district is, I don't know, it was indicated to me, and probably to you, I will tell you too, I'm sure, that they're uncomfortable with significant more development until that secondary access issue is resolved.
Because the, the discussion was around them building it as entitled, which gave them that access.
Yeah, it's, yeah, they have sort of, as part of that entitlement, there's like an interim secondary access through the train depot property, you know?
Right, yeah.
That's sort of a interim fix, but the district wasn't really having a lot more development down there without really trying to figure out what's the real long-term solution for secondary access.
Because that's not an acceptable long-term solution.
I, I think from their perspective, that's what's been communicated to us, it's not, I mean, it's okay for the stations project, but if we're going to continue to build down there, that wouldn't be acceptable, yeah.
And if I understood you correctly, Noah, that, they don't have that concern if it's commercial that's built down there?
Uh, yeah, because the idea, that's interesting, I think we almost haven't had that same conversation, because the likelihood of a commercial project is not very high.
Is next to nil, yeah, okay. Okay. Any other question, yes?
Yeah, I guess I just didn't, I felt like the library kind of disappeared, so is there any, where, where would that go?
I, so I added it to my department, the roundabout ban repeal, and then the library.
Okay.
At least initially, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Well, I, I just had to follow on on my initial comment, which is, I, I, I know that your department is very effective and lean, and it's nice to have these, these projects, but I would really like to clear out the queue and just be guaranteed to get these things done, because we're going to have new challenges that come up, that we haven't even dreamt of right now. And I, I feel like a couple of these things are going to get, ended, end up getting pushed to the next fiscal year, because of whatever unforeseen things happen. I, I'm looking at our police budget, and I mean, we're budgeting for 22, 22.4 FTE, and with the difficulty we're having with hiring, I'm, I'm wondering, are we actually going to be able to fill all those positions, and would it make sense to do a one, like a one year, allocate some additional funding for a contractor or a temporary position to just help us catch up on planning projects, so that we're not adding to the overall long-term costs?
I've been whispering.
It's a sidebar.
So just looking at the list, I was just making a suggestion to the city manager as to how we can maybe allocate it, and just so you know, I, so right now, the bike and ped master plan is, in theory, funded and primarily managed by a consultant. I've been working with SE, I'm sorry, ABAG MTC on a second grant application, and they're very close to announcing it, I don't know that we're going to get it, but we're, I think, very favorable for Santero Way, which, it's a significant grant, and it would fully fund the project, given our existing commitments. So those two would be consultant-driven, obviously, it's still a lot of staff time to manage them, but.
Yeah, the, the housing element too was, I mean, it was by design when we did this, or when, I think when Noah put it. Yeah, the, the housing element too was, I mean, it was by design when we did this, or when, I think when Noah put it up, was, there's a bunch of stuff that we don't, I mean, there's stuff coming out of the housing element. There's stuff that we don't even anticipate. So there was, there was a chunk of time sort of reserved for that, you know, bucket of who knows what? The state's going to throw at us, right? So, I, I mean, I think there's things that can be taken off with contractors, like Noah was suggesting.
Yeah, so I absolutely hear your concern. I'm pretty confident. Maybe we just continue to monitor and then if we're mid-year and we're concerned, then we can pivot and reallocate.
And we could stop the legislators from giving us more unfunded mandates.
And, and we will, we will revisit this anyway, you know, around mid-year, see, you know, or as new priorities come up and we can have a conversation. But at this point, I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate, you know, like defunding positions to move money into contractors at this point. Yeah.
Since we were asking for, for priorities, I, I would just say the bike ped plan, the S B nine objective design criteria and the already underway digital permit management are sort of top of the list for me. I mean, I appreciate your confidence that you can do most or all of this list, but.
So are we, kind of were going department by department and then we kind of, are we going back to that? Because it seemed like.
We are, yeah. So just if there's any other thoughts on priority for community development specifically? And then we'll move to the next. Yeah. Mary brought up Santero, is that?
I think we, we, you know, it'd be great if we got, you know, funding for that, but we, we've got to solve that problem. And we have got to solve that long-term safety problem. Or there's a whole lot of property owners that have property that they can do nothing with.
Okay.
I'm so sorry to take up so much time. I already spoke so much, but I just, I didn't give my priorities. So I, I agree the bike and ped master plan, I think is the top of the list for me. And, and the S B nine design standard, design guidelines. And I think that the housing administration program is really important to get done this year too. So that would be top of my top three.
All right. Anybody else have any other opinions? We move on? All right. If anything, if anyone has any epiphanies, we always can come back to it. All right, so, so my department, so tonight I put in the roundabout investigate, roundabout ban repeal and then investigate what it would take to have a library here in Kattati. And then in terms of, in terms of, if there's any sort of general priorities for things, that would be, that would be helpful. I will tell you the things that can't move because they're, they're just going to go, they're going to go regardless is at least Sunflower Park preliminary design has to go. Because I think we have a grant for that and we have to move on it. The C P M A, P O A negotiations, it's going to happen. Records management project, that just is continuing to happen. Public safety messaging, the community survey, we're due for that this year. And, yeah, so I guess that, those five things. If anything else jumps out to anybody as things you'd really like to make sure that we keep forefront as we move through the year, let me know.
Can I jump in?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I was reading.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know. Basically, all of the red ones are important to me. Okay. Thanks for highlighting my top choices.
Can I go? Or should?
Go ahead.
I agree. The red ones are important to me. And those are the ones that I, I put at the top of my list.
Actually, I want to modify mine a little bit. The, the e-bike scooter is not at the top of my list. The other red ones are.
It's not?
It's, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I concur with the, the top three. I mean, I think the e-bike scooter program would be awesome, but not top priority.
I assume you want the library at the top too?
Library is always at the top. So.
Yes, Laura?
I want to stand up for this e-bike scooter program for a second. We have a proposed five-story building with very little parking downtown. And I think we need to be proactive about solutions. How are we going to make it feasible for, if, if that gets built for people to live there and not have to park two cars in the downtown area? So to me, the e-bike scooter is extremely important. And I, I'm, you know, I know we're all hopeful that the, the, forgetting the acronym, the countywide group is going to do the e-bike program, but I think it behooves us to plan for that. We, we need to have some way to mitigate the impact to all the new residents we might potentially have downtown with very little parking spaces. So that's still at the, that's at the top of the list for me. And along with the other ones in red, and I would also add in the update public safety messaging procedures, which to me goes along with the translation of public safety webpages.
And so Laura, I have a question for you.
Yes.
So all the work that we did, you're saying for the equity stuff, you, you believe that these other things are higher in priority? Police oversight and R I P A and all of that than all the things we worked on for a year?
Oh, I don't, no, I don't think that.
Well, if we're giving, well, because what's on here is continued implementation of the projects that we.
I'm, I'm sorry. I think I was sort of thinking of this as a, a chance to advocate for new things. I just sort of had assumed that that would continue to go on. So, no, that's also at the top of my list as well. I mean, really, yeah, I could go one by one on all of these and list them out for you, what I, what I think about each one.
No, I just was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, of course I want to see the work that we did.
Well, because everybody was saying these are my top three and you picked the red ones and then pick, you know, and then I just want.
Yeah.
So is that?
Yeah, it's, it's, it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't mean that the other things aren't going to move forward. It's just, it just helps us when we're doing some relative prioritization if opportunities work out that way.
And I, I also want to, you know, the economic development is also super important. I mean, I keep seeing businesses close and that's really sad. And I, you know, what we can do to help existing businesses and what we can do to help, you know, new businesses get started in town. Especially by local people, you know, local business people.
And I, I think we owe it to the community to continue to move forward on that Rhonda Letty branch. I mean, we made those commitments and we've made those commitments to open space. And I, I think to stop work on that would be not really great. So I think that that's important to move forward. And can you talk a little bit, so I know how I feel about it, about the emergency operations update?
That's the, that's just the plan. So we're going to be, we're going to be doing a drill here actually pretty soon to test out all of our emergency operation systems and, and test the plan. Every time you do it, you find that there's something that you didn't think of. So, so it's, it's that kind of thing. We already have a plan. We've drilled on it several times historically in the past. We did, I mean, so probably about six, six years ago, we did a complete rewrite of the plan. And then we've, you know, done some testing on it. But this is, this one coming up is going to be probably the most comprehensive live test that we're going to be doing. So it, things will come out of that that will inevitably result in updates to the plan. So that's what that's about.
I mean, it seems to me that other than new things, that's a basic function that we as a city should, you know, have a good handle on. And it's great that we're practicing it. So I think that that's important. I think it's come up quite a few times. I think Sylvia's mentioned escape groups and things like that, you know? I believe letting people know in an emergency, because we will have them.
Yeah. I believe, I believe we're the only small city in the county that's drilling on this event, right? Yeah, they're all big cities. Anyway. Santa Rosa, Petaluma and us and the county. Yeah. Yes.
And talk to me a little bit about the joint housing J P A bond. Is that to help us with affordable housing? Because we keep saying we want affordable housing and.
Yeah, yeah, so that, I don't know, Noah, you might have a more current update on where that stands.
Yeah, so you're familiar with the concept? I'll give a brief summary. So the idea is municipal-owned properties don't pay property taxes. And so the idea is the, to utilize a municipal bond to purchase for affordable homes or to potentially allow construction of affordable housing. And just because some of the, the ongoing year-over-year costs, a big percentage of that is property taxes. So if property taxes aren't part of that, then in theory, the, the overall funding requirement and ongoing annual output for the, to cover the cost of that project is reduced. So that's the, the concept. In exploring it, obviously, there's a lot of details that, that are involved, including like the fees that are associated with the finance folks who list those bonds, sell those bonds, the attorneys that are required to be involved in those transactions. So there's an economy of scale issue. And there's also kind of a marketability for the scale of bonds that we're likely to get. We're not large, you know, we're not, we wouldn't be the best bonds that, that some of these investment firms will be looking for, just because the, the dollar amount would not be at huge significant numbers. All that being said, we're still think it's an interesting idea. It's an interesting concept to potentially figure out unique ways to finance affordable housing, whether it's to acquire a market rate project and then buy down that affordability and relist it as affordable homes, or try to come up with a construction financing mechanism. So we've been meeting with the other small jurisdictions in this, in the county to try to consider J P A. We all, all are already members of some current J P As that may function. And we've also had discussions with the red, the renewal enterprise district in Santa Rosa, to see if they would be interested in potentially almost creating a subset of their current J P A, because they already have a big funding pool. They wouldn't want to dilute that by adding new folks, but maybe they could have a, a subset to manage. So we've been exploring all of these. And the bottom line is, we feel like we need a, a applied test in order to really present it to the public and to the decision-making bodies of each of the cities to kind of have a demonstrated example of how this might work on a local applied basis, because it doesn't really exist yet. And Rona Park, I think, is starting to make some traction on that. We've partnered with Burbank Housing to kind of run some tests and some, some kind of models for how it might work. And I believe Rona Park is exploring that. And we hope that they are successful in achieving it. And then we have that as a model or a test case as to how we might be able to move forward.
Yeah, I think one of the, one of the big unknowns or the big unanswered questions, as he was alluding to, was, do we attach it to the red? Do we create our own J P A? Do we attach it to some other statewide J P A we're already part of? Just as a, just as a vehicle for issuing and maintaining bonds?
It just seems that if we're serious about helping in any way we can with affordable housing, that, you know, this seems like an avenue that, that we need to pursue. It's just my opinion. Onward?
All right. So onto the next department, we have police. And I will say that so for, some of the things, again, we're going to, we're going to do regardless, right? There's the high-low evacuation drill, the annual mid-year police reports, social media and a lot of the, I mean, I guess those are the ones that are just going to happen regardless. But there's other things that have varying levels of sort of motion already in terms of where they are. But if the council has any particular priorities, I know in my department, so the civilian oversight thing would be me and the police chief kind of working through that conversation. And I already hear that that's an important thing that the council wants to talk about. But I'd be happy to see if there's any other, any other things that you feel are priorities.
Guess we can move on to public works.
Question?
Oh, well.
I'm sorry.
No, but.
Did you have a question first? Okay. You have a question. I see a priority here on police officer recruiting with focus on equity and inclusion. And I know I kind of asked a question before about bilingual pay for staff, including police and other staff. Is that something that can be added either under city manager or police? I think it kind of crosses over to different departments.
We have the P O A and P M A negotiations coming up. And I guarantee you, they're not going to have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
That's a, that's a, that's an easy one. Yeah.
More to chat question?
Yeah. I, I, I just had some questions about the scent tracking dog. I know that we're not going to be using it for drug sniffing anymore because it's too dangerous. So I'm just kind of wondering how often you foresee that being utilized? Do we have a lot of crimes in Kattati where we need?
You know, I don't have a good sense. I personally don't have a good sense for it. The chief would have a much better sense than me. But basically, I mean, the scent tracking dog is, is, is pretty exclusively in terms of its police service would be used for, as you, as you allude to, just tracking down, you know, people with dementia, people with, you know, Alzheimer's, right? Mental disabilities, people that are kidnapped. So we don't have a lot of kidnappings, but more like elderly people that go missing. That would be the more common thing, I think. Or people with mental disabilities that walk out and they don't know, their family doesn't know where they are. So that'd be the primary thing that it would be used for. Aside from just being a, a community engagement tool. I mean, everyone loves a dog. So it'd be really popular in all the, all the different community outreach events. I, I would expect that there would be probably a significant amount of work countywide too, where other cities might call us, because there's none other, there's no other scent tracking dogs in the, in the North Bay for sure. Probably a bigger area than that.
Follow that up. So does that mean this, this dog is not like track down suspects kind of scent-following dog? It's exclusively missing persons type of use?
That's a good question. I, that, I mean, I suppose in theory it could. If you had some article that you could, you know, if someone's, they ran and they're trying to find them. But that's, I mean, normally that's not, you know, normally they apprehend suspects pretty close to where the crime occurred or where the vehicle pulled over. It's not like a, or is the person there, they could be blocks away. So I guess in theory they could, but I don't think that would be the primary use. And they, and these dogs are, I think the chief mentioned this, but they're, they're trained to not bark or be aggressive at all. They're trained just to sit down when they find the person they're looking for. So it doesn't trigger like if you're autistic, it doesn't trigger autistic episode or anything like that.
I just, in terms of priorities, you know, definitely the red ones like from before. But I also feel like community outreach is incredibly important. And the, one of the council meetings that I attended before I was on the council, I heard a lot of words like a lot, or very few, or hardly ever, rather than actual numbers. So I don't know if it needs to be on here, but you know, when that report happens, that it include actual data, not just, you know, the general idea on police activity in Kattati. it include actual data, not just, you know, the general idea on police activity in Kattati. So I'm not sure where that would go, but I presume that would take police time to get the actual numbers rather than just generalities.
So you're talking about, like, on the annual report, the number of outreach events, actual numbers of outreach events?
No, actually, those are two separate things.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm just, so community outreach, I think, is important. You know, I hear what you're saying about the dog. I can totally get how kids would feel more comfortable if the police had for had a dog. Separate from that, I'm talking about when they come to us, to, or to the public, to share their, you know, like, because it was around the military equipment, right? And we were, and people were asking, you know, how often does this get used and in what circumstances and, you know, those type of questions. And I never heard specific numbers, you know? And so I'm just saying, when they do that report, if they could please include specific numbers. So not just for us, but for the public. And, and I'm just presuming that would take time, and so that's why I'm bringing it up now.
Yeah. Well, one of the, you know, one of the positions that's proposed for this coming budget is a, like, a record slash, I guess, analyst person that would be able to help with becoming an expert in the police record system so that they could actually pull numbers much easier. If, you know, because there's, I mean, it's, it's a different world today. People have a lot of questions, and it's rarely the kind of questions that the standard at canned reports give you. So you need to be able to get into the databases and pull numbers. So, yeah.
Just, and one thing I'm struggling with in all of the departments is, and maybe this is a suggestion for a future structural difference, is to split those projects into something that's special about this year, but we just have to do, and discretionary projects. I mean, you have to go through each department and say, this is the stuff that you don't actually get to decide on, we're just going to do, and, and the rest of the stuff, what's your priorities? It would actually be helpful if that were two separate lists, because I know there's stuff that comes up once every five years that we just got to do, and so it doesn't belong on, it's the same every year lists. So anyway, that's, that's a suggestion. One question on the police in particular is, why is vehicle pedestrian bicycle safety and enforcement a project, whereas traffic enforcement is day-to-day? Like, I think vehi, you know, vehicle pedestrian bicycle safety slash enforcement, that ought to be an ongoing thing that the police department always does, and that should just move to the daily list, and we shouldn't keep putting it on the project list, because it's there every year.
Yeah, I think, so although you wouldn't know it by reading it, I think the intent of that was, like, focused enforcement events, because we've been talking, the little council and all of us, and then myself and the chief, have been talking with, talking with department about, aside from the general kind of enforcement, that it just happens day-to-day. And that, that should include bicycle kind of enforcement or pedestrian enforcement. Doing things like focused enforcement in the beats, you know? So that's like a specialized effort, or focused enforcement on pedestrian, like car stopping for pedestrians, where they'll have, like, decoy police officers pretending to walk out and, you know, not have cars stop for them so they can ticket them. Or like the truck ordinance, you know, like a real focused, I, I think that was, even though it doesn't, you would never know it by reading that, that was the intent of that, is that, like, continuing, like, continuing the focus to type enforcement efforts on certain areas or certain types of things.
Well, then, then maybe what I'm suggesting, so there could be a, just a, you know, more descriptive name that would be helpful to understand, but even that as a, as an ongoing project of the police is something that maybe, as part of this process, we could say, move that to the day-to-day list and just make it part of what we do every year, and let's stop pretending it's something we make a decision about every year.
Yeah.
Because we should do it every year, and we should just keep doing it. And we can, we also have the ability to look at the day-to-day duties and question those. We don't tend to do it much, because they're obvious stuff that we have to do, but we know we can look at those lists as well. So if it ever comes to, you know, a time when we actually have to look at tough fiscal times, we're going to be looking at those lists, too. So it's not, you know, safe haven and discretionary, it's all up for discussion.
And a good example of that that's, that's on here is the annual police report. I think we made it pretty clear that it's annual and we want to see it every year. So it's, it's more a what you're saying kind of...
Yeah. No, I get the point. It's annual.
Yeah, and the training, too, right? Like, the trainings on the day-to-day, but this, you know, de-escalation and implicit bias is a project. And I would presume that would be something that, you know, is part of regular training, especially when, you know, when there's turnover, right?
We had, we had asked for this specifically.
To become a regular part of training or to be a one-off?
They should become a regular part, but we, that, I think, is why they were originally on here, is because we had added them to their list of trainings.
Right. And that... Should move over. Yeah. I think we're arguing in agreement.
I think that's... This list should be shorter.
Got it.
Is that another?
Yeah. So Public Works, so we added a couple of changes on there, just to point out, they are in red, but the gateway signage with a focus on the post-mounted entry signs, that was part of the conversation in strategic planning. Those are relatively inexpensive and easy to do, and I think we can knock them all out easily in one year. And then the electronic marquee for the downtown. And that's it, I think. I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know. I told Craig, he doesn't, he doesn't get any discretion on this one, so, but if you guys have any thoughts, please.
Well, I just want to bring up the, pulling the bike paths and any other, you know, somewhat neglected paved infrastructure into the pavement management plan. Is that going to take a lot of time to figure out how to slot those into the calendar and get them on the list?
Well, I think I could begin with highlighting what we've accomplished. So the wayfinding address is certainly the bike path aspect to things. We've got every, every paving project we do incorporates enhancing the bike lanes within the confines, you know, admittedly, of a paving project.
And I think we, I think in this latest CIP, I think the class-one maintenance is added, class-one bike path maintenance is added, or if it's, no, anyway, it'll, it's not, it's not a big work effort.
Yeah, no, there's a small, a small thing I'm, I'm talking about, is just the paved bike things, like the class-one path along the Laguna.
Yeah.
I, if they're already in the pavement management plan, that's great, then I'm not asking for anything new. But I'm just asking that they be on the list with the streets with a schedule.
Yep.
So we can get them managed.
And the city manager is correct, that they, that bike class-one along Laguna is included in that first year of the CIP. And then we have the annual bike path safety enhancements, where we're adding RRFBs. And then this year, we're not done with this year yet, so we've got a study that was completed for enhancing bike path safety on Valparaiso. And so I think I talked about that briefly before, but there's at Lund Hill, you know, there's people coming off of Delano Park wanting to get into the neighborhood. And so we'll make an enhanced crosswalk there with the flashing beacons. And then at the Valparaiso and Old Redwood Highway, we're improving the traffic signalization there, so, because the traffic signals just aren't readily visible to the cars. But I think attaching it to the PMP is a little bit of a, not quite a direct hit, because the PMP is all about paving. It's, every single thing about that is to optimize where our dollars go for this very predictable thing that happens, you know, where the pavement degrades. And so just, just optimizing spending money there. But, but you're seeing in the CIP, and I'd encourage you to look at the five-year CIP, more and more projects that are wholly dedicated to, to bike paths. We have a, a project we've submitted to the SCTA, Sonoma County Transportation Authority, for sidewalk gap closures. Systemic project for across the entire city, for looking at, you know, linking up all these pieces of pathways throughout town. And that is a project that's not linked to a paving project. It is by itself to just bike and pad friendly, looking at class-one, class-two bike lanes throughout the city. And then, then the Highway 116, sorry, intersection, it's a long list.
I appreciate the broader picture. I appreciate the broader picture of bike path work. I'm talking about a very specific paved asset, the bike one path along the Laguna. Why does it not make sense to attach that to the pavement management plan? The, the difficulty with just including the capital improvement plan, that's great, it gets repaved once. In 20 years, it looks like it looks now again. It's got to be on a schedule, which is what the pavement management plan is about. So that's all I'm arguing. I think paved assets should be in the pavement management plan, not just those that carry cars. Thanks.
You, you want to see it, like, you know, West Sierra, you want to see in the pavement management plan, the Laguna path and what its pavement index is, and so it's in the inventory and it gets managed just like West Sierra would get managed. Am I saying that? Okay, all right.
Mayor, if I could, so we could do a surrogate of that. The pavement management program is a very strict state-regulated program. We have to do a survey every two years, and they do not accept anything other than a very well-defined street segment. That makes a lot of sense, which you're talking about, because it's paving and it's degrading over time. We could kind of do a, a similar program on the side to keep track of the, the class ones.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Might not fit in the state's definition. That's, that's fair.
We, we have, I mean, we have other things that, we have other things that would be kind of analogous. I mean, we have, we're building other class-one paths, too, that we're going to have to continue to maintain in the future, and you can't just build them and walk away like that. So basketball court, tennis court, I mean, things that, that require condition assessments and then a recurring maintenance schedule. Yeah, even if it's not strictly the state PMP, yeah.
Maybe they can go in their own grouped thing together, pavement other than street plan. It is basically what you're saying.
So I, I need to ask about the 116 West Kattati. People keep coming to me, telling me about being rear-ended and being super scared, even just driving there, let alone, you know, walking from that area to Lowe's or anywhere. It's just too, it's terrifying. So what, I, I see that it's, it's listed as grants. Are these ones that have already been written, or are they looking, or are they being sought out?
They're being, well, they're being sought, they're also in SCTA's priority funding list. And development projects that develop there could also be part of the solution. So we're trying to attack it from three different ways. And in one or more of them, well, it's only a matter of time it'll come through.
And we're currently designing that intersection, getting it to 30% design to position ourselves for the grant money that we've applied for. And, yeah, so...
So the intention is for it to happen this, this year, then? Is that what I'm reading?
Depending on the grant funding.
We're, so we're, yeah, the end of this year, we'll be at 30% design-ish, right? And then the council had previously already dedicated a million dollars to the project, and that'll get you to design, basically. So it's a Caltrans facility, 116. So even once we get the grant, that's probably going to be a couple of years, even get to construction.
So like, three years, then, is what I'm hearing?
Optimistically, yeah.
If, if someone dies, does it go faster?
Not usually. I mean, depends how many people die.
It's, I just, it's just, I understand what you're saying, and I know...
That, that sounds callous, I'm, I'm sorry. But I, it, from, from, just from past experience with Caltrans, they deal with a lot of roadways in the Bay Area, where there's a lot of traffic and a lot of accidents, and so an accident out in rural Kattati doesn't really rank very high on their list of priorities when they have limited funding. So it's, it's really up to us to lead the process.
And Kay, to give you some perspective, I believe it took decades for them to get the changes down on the drone, again, because it's Caltrans. And it, you're correct, it's unfortunate, but yes, there were some people that, that were killed at that intersection.
On West Sierra?
No, on the drone.
116?
Where, Medrona and 116.
Right.
Just up the road from there, and it was decades. And there was a lot of lobbying, but it's Caltrans, and that's, it's unfortunate.
But it's, I mean, ultimately, it's going to be probably a combination of grants and developer money, that it's going to get across the finish line, get it across the finish line in terms of construction. But we're pushing it forward in design right now.
Okay. So when, when people ask me, I just tell them, we're doing everything we can, and don't hold your breath.
Yeah. And it's a state roadway, too.
Sorry?
It's a, and just, it's also, it's a, it's a state roadway. Highway 116 is a state roadway.
Right.
So we're taking the lead, even though it's not our roadway, because of the issues we want to solve there.
Right. The West Kattati portion is us, though, right?
It is, yeah.
So is there anything we can do from West Kattati to make that part safer, at least? I mean, we can't put, we can't put a, a left-hand turn lane coming from 116, but what about from West Kattati on to 116? Because even that is really, you know, you can't see...
Not in the short term.
Okay.
Yeah.
And short-term, five, like, what, what is short-term for you?
Well, I mean, I'm hoping if we can continue on the design path we're on, and we get grant money or developer money in the reasonable timeframe, I think within a five-year window is probably right.
Thanks.
Damian, on the streets, the gateway signage, is that intended to be the, the little metal signs at the entrances to Kattati that are over 50 years old, that are just white with nothing on them anymore?
That's the post-mounted signs, yeah.
Okay. And then that, that's what that is there?
That's what that intends to be.
Okay, good. Because they're pretty sad.
Yeah.
Mayor, I have a question. I had a question also about the signage, the signage in the Laguna, I'm not sure if that's also Public Works or, is that also, is it a project or is it a day-to-day task? Some of the graffiti I've been seeing on some of the signage.
It's day-to-day, yeah. If you see it, take a picture and send it to us.
Okay. All right. Because there was some over by, yeah, I'll take a picture and send it in. Okay.
I just had a question about the, the math on adding up the FTE. I know there seem to be a lot of rounding errors, because it goes down to zero for so many things. But we've got a total budgeted FTE of eight, but 9.3 with projects, and a lot of those projects seem pretty, or optimistic on the amount of time they might take. So I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that discrepancy.
Yeah, so, I mean, Public Works, just like planning is, and like, actually, and like all of our departments, really, they can get, they get a lot done with not a lot of staff. And Public Works, these are, because these are projects, they're primarily, you know, primarily, there's a lot of consultant time in there, so it's not, it's not strictly all-staff time. So it's, and it's, and it's also not, you know, not, you know, not totally precise. I mean, I would say that it does seem, you know, when you look at that, that there may be a little bit overloaded, and we'll have to work on that, on sort of triaging work.
Okay.
But, but between that, between triaging things, in terms of altering time, timelines on things as needed, and using consultants, we're hoping to get a lot of that done.
Okay. And isn't it true, then, given that some of these are grant-related, if the grants don't happen, then that impacts those projects also?
Yeah, like, well, Sunflower Park, for example, if that grant doesn't ultimately come through, which I don't expect, but it might not come through, then that'll just go, you know, that was, won't go forward right now, for example.
Because there's a lot of those.
The generator, wastewater generator project won't go forward if we don't get the grant from FEMA. Yeah.
Um, one, just one more comment. One thing that jumps out to me that I would put a pretty high par on is the annual bicycle pedestrian safety...
pedestrian safety improvements. And if I'm understanding right, is that kind of just a placeholder for things that might come up that we want to be responsive to? Or is that a specific project that's already been identified?
Well, a lot of them have been sort of highlighted in like the L R S P and that sort of thing. But, but they do, they're separate from the road projects. So when road projects will do, you know, we'll do, we'll pick up everything we can within the existing road section.
Yeah.
But these are like, like an example that Craig had mentioned is like Loma Linda, Valparaiso, that crossing. It's a, it's a project that came, it actually came up from the L R S P, but it wasn't specifically programmed, but there's some money set aside in every budget. It's been the practice, every budget, to put some money aside.
Yeah.
To kind of pick those kind of things up.
Well, I think that's great. And I, I think I would personally just like to see us, you know, continue to do that and really prioritize just being responsive. Because I know people, when they have complaints and then they see it getting fixed, it's, we get a lot of good feedback about that. So we can build some capacity and to continue, continue doing that. Thank you.
Are we done with this item, Public Works?
Yeah, that's it.
All right. Can we take five?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, I'm happy that we have you. Thank you. Damian, that's really great, getting the summary of, I know it was a long time ago, but all the insurance costs that play into our general fund study, as well as the prioritization for the projects. Because again, those are all included within our general fund, because these are projects that each of these departments we just talked about have to come up with, you know, funding for, whether it's contracts or whatnot. So it really does help us decide how to pull in everything for our general fund budget. So tonight's the first of two budget study sessions. We'll cover some general budget information, as well as the proposed budget for the general fund, just the operations. Again, I know we just talked about a bunch of fund capital stuff, but we're going to have to wait till the next study session to really get down into the detail as to what capital projects we're going to continue to push forward next year based on the funding So within the study slides, we have the planned budget production schedule, some economic overview, information on staffing. It's not explicitly covered, sorry, within the slide deck, but it is in the workbooks. And that was packet pages eighty-two through eighty-four. So if you want to kind of look at the overall F T Es, we'll kind of talk about them broadly within the individual department sections. And then we'll dive into more of the numbers. I know we've been talking about a lot of numbers tonight with the financial forecast. So it's, some of it's more of the same, some of it's a little bit different. And it's going to focus again, the revenues and expenditures, including allocated contracts. And I want to point out that supplemental, or really, it's the foundational workbooks for the presentation. And it's included in packet pages seventy-three to eighty-four. So our tentative schedule, so where we've been, where we're going. So last month, March seventh, and just now, we just had our strategic planning sessions where we're talking about the city goals, the objectives, including our projects. And today, we're meeting on the proposed general fund. And then in two weeks, we'll meet again to discuss the enterprise funds, special revenue funds, capital projects, and the remaining pieces to the general fund, which are those transfers out for capital projects. And then on May twenty-third, all fingers crossed, knock on wood, we're planning on bringing to council the full budget for adoption. So what are our budget responsibilities? This is kind of getting into the budget one oh one. So this is what our policy says our individual responsibilities are for the budget. So myself, as a director of admin services, I get to plan, coordinate, analyze, and present the budget. Each individual department head must prepare and submit their individual department budgets. And these are then evaluated by the city manager, who facilitates and consults with the department heads on their proposals and determines really what the final budget for presentation to council what is to be. And he then also gets to have the nice intro statement at the beginning of our city budget book. Your role as council is really setting our priorities, which we just spent a lot of good time doing, so that we understand where we're going to help the city move forward and approving the annual budget. So in the world of municipal government, there's always talk about a budget season. You know, you have that, you know, January to June where we're all working on our budgets. But really, there isn't a specific season. It might be more heavy-duty, more in the forefront of our community, where we're talking about the monies for the next year. However, the budget cycle is a year-round cycle for us. We take it quarter by quarter, month by month, agenda, agendized meeting by meeting for any adjustments and things that might happen. So really, it starts for us December, November, December, where I meet with Damian and we also kind of coordinate with city council as to what our schedule is going to be. So when can we fit in plans? When do we need to have our strategic planning for council? Are we going to have a team-building event that we want to do beforehand? How are we going to fit this in to make sure that we meet our requirement of having an adopted budget before June thirtieth? And so that, again, goes all the way back to November, December. We stop, we then talk about mid-year. So we're talking about what's happening right then, and it's still happening. Move on to March, we're in the strategic planning and budget planning. Go all the way to June, like we just talked about in our tentative plan. And as soon as we adopt a budget, and just like we brought up earlier about insurance, as soon as we adopt a budget, we have amendments happening. We have changes. You know, this is just a plan for what we think is going to happen, and there's always alternatives. We get last-minute adjustments from insurance or, you know, other things that take a higher priority, and so we have to budget for those adjustments. So I just also wanted to present that this is a snapshot from our current adopted budget book for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. And it shows a total number of funds, which are basically standalone financials, a set of books and records for each one of these funds we have to keep and we also have to budget for. And so the city currently has forty-eight different funds. And the major funds, of course, that we want to talk about in depth and detail are our general fund, our enterprise funds, which each one of those, our water fund has two funds, our sewer fund has two funds, our successor agency fund is also kind of a major fund where we have to deal with those as well. So there's a lot of, so we have six major funds. So it takes a lot of effort from all of our staff to put these all together, to make projections for each one of these pieces. And so that's why we really want to focus on the general fund at this point in time for our operations, because it is the biggest lift, because each of those departments, you can only think of as its own, you know, fund. It has revenues and it has expenses, and they work a little bit different than the rest of them. So next, we'll get into additional forecasts and assumptions unless there are some questions about that piece. So this is just general forecasting assumptions. I know we kind of just talked about this with the long-range plan, but budgeting is a plan and it's based on assumptions, so you kind of have to talk about them. For these, we really strive to have the most up-to-date information possible, just like the long-range plan again. There's always uncertainties, and we do try and add a small amount of fiscal conservatism within them. So even though we might get projections that are based on certain things, we are never going to round up revenues. We're never going to round down expenses. There's always going to be small little bits. You'll hopefully never see pennies in a budget, because again, these are assumptions. And so that's what we want them to show. Overall, we found during COVID, our current mix of sales tax seems fairly secure. However, it is not very broad. And we are seeing that the county pools are expected to continue to decline as Amazon distribution centers are going online. So there's more of them going online, which is then deferring those monies away from the county pools, as well as less online retail shopping. You know, people are out doing shopping elsewhere, and so it's not bringing as much into the pool. And they're also spending money differently on experiences again, instead of objects. And so those don't derive the same sales tax. Additionally, we are seeing a slowing in cannabis business tax, and we've pulled back on those projections due to, again, increased probably revenues during COVID that have now kind of pulled back, as well as increased competition in the marketplace. So I wanted to show, we not only look at projections, you know, going forward based on economic conditions, but we do take some historical trends into consideration for our revenues in order to make sure we're keeping them conservative. Like what dips and valleys have we seen previously? You know, is this really realistic or was this a one-time, you know, single revenue piece that we shouldn't rely on again? How do we pull those out? And so we, we do some trends on some of the other non-significant revenue. Of course, sales tax, property tax, other tax. We do more projections based on what we know is happening in the macro, but other non-specific, we kind of look at what historically has happened and what we can, you know, pretty much rely on. So that's their revenue expectations. So our assumptions around expenses, also, it's primarily, we have to find a balance. So each department head, we have our own department that we're looking at for our specific contracts that we might have based on the projects that we've proposed to you. We might have other operating pieces, you know, what are we going to be bringing in in permitting fees? So we know that we also are going to have those contract services that offset some of those permit fees. So that is an expense and revenue balance that we have to meet. So if we're going to have a significant development, we'll probably going to have a little bit more contract services related to meeting those development needs. And so those are some of those things that are in, in the expense piece that we have to find a balance with the revenue. How do those match? Are they, do they correlate? And then we also have our liabilities management that we put into this. And a big piece of that was what we did with the issuing of the bonds for our unfunded pension liability. And so how do we, you know, keep that moving forward and not lose traction on that? Some significant outstanding items is really the insurance cost. That is a big question mark over us right now. And we'll talk a little bit more about how it's protected in the general fund, but that is an allocated contract that, or allocated expense that we push across those funds. So, and we're not certain where that is. So that will be something that does come in as an adjustment before we bring it up for adoption. So those were just some economic assumptions overall, and we're going to dig a little bit deeper into the general fund unless there are some more questions on the last section. Okay. Okay, so I know I've mentioned the general fund twenty, forty, sixty, so many times, but I still wanted to provide to our community a snapshot of what the general fund is. What is the purpose of this? It just sounds like it's, you know, a piggy bank that we get to pull from, but really, it's not. This is the fund that operates all of our city core services, mostly, right? Outside of water and sewer, this is where our functions live, including police, public works, recreation, community development, all of our city management, and all of our infrastructure really kind of lives and thrives because of our general fund, again, outside of our water and sewer. So what are the highlights that are in the general fund currently? So the city has a policy that requires a minimum reserve of 25% of operating expenses for a budget year.
I think we're behind a couple of slides.
A lot of slides.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's okay.
Okay. So there's our general fund slide. Thank you. I didn't realize it was, whoever flashed in, okay.
I was waiting for you to take a breath.
I'm supposed to breathe? Okay, we got this. Okay, so here's our general fund. Okay, so here's our general fund. And now we're on to our highlights. We're not going to slide any on any of these, so we should be good. Overall, revenues are proposed as an increase in twenty-two, or twenty-three, twenty-four from the adopted budget. But really, there's no change from where we're estimating our current year for twenty-two, twenty-three. An item of note is that the increase in revenue and expense from twenty-one, twenty-two is due to the additional discretionary payment to CalPERS. And we'll, and we will continue to process the lump sum payments, providing a 3% savings of a 3% interest charge. So if we didn't make that lump sum payment, we would be charged an additional 3% per month for that payment. And we are also including a budgeted $100,000 transfer to our 115 trust in line with our savings plan for the 10-year savings to the 115 trust. Overall, staffing costs are up 6% compared to the adopted budget. So the adopted budget, when it was adopted, was a 10% increase. This year's a 6% increase, and it's based on, again, budgeting for full staff, included COLAs and STEPS, and healthcare increases. Those are still projected to continue to increase. Other cost changes are really, they're pretty flat, so they're estimated about around 3.5%, I believe, was around overall for the other costs outside of interns. So in the budget, how we have it currently, insurance is included within other expenses. Insurance estimate, we have a 10% increase, or sorry, yes, a 10% increase, I believe, for general and workers' comp, and we have a 7% increase for the other, but that is not where we're looking, where we're going to end up being. And so that is subject to change again. And then contract services, overall, we are expecting an increase of 10%. That's a combination of some of the contracts we already have existing are increased around 3.5%, and then we have new contracts coming on board that make up the difference, and some of those are the projects we just discussed. So overall, I would like to point out packet page seventy-three or seventy-four, so you can really see the change between our adopted budget and our estimated actuals, as well as the adopted budget to our proposed budget. This is the alternative view of our proposed budget compared to our estimated actual budget. So it really is, as I said, flat, with most of the changes happening in property tax, which is at that 3% increase, primarily based on county valuations, new developments. Other tax is increased from the estimated actuals, but again, those are down 17% from our adopted budget to our estimated actuals. So we're down in twenty-two, twenty-three, but we're looking for a slight upturn in twenty-three, twenty-four from the estimated actuals. Charges for services, we're proposing an increase based on planned projects and knowing that things are coming in, things are continuing to develop within those other charges for services. And so departments are pretty, you know, conservative, I'm going to keep using this word, around what they expect their revenues are going to be. And so this is really derived at the department level and their expectations of what their actions and things are going to be. And some of those are like charges for fees and penalties and such. So maybe like the police department with their added traffic enforcement things, they would have an increase in those types of charges for services. That's where that would be included. So comparative inflows, again, it's not really exciting, because there's really not much of a change. We're seeing very small changes across, again, property tax and those other charges for services primarily. So my favorite picture of our general fund revenues, or it's really just shows the magnitude of those inflows of resources to the general fund and the importance of sales tax, both the Bradley Burns and the Measure S, as well as the property tax to the city. So I hit on a lot of these highlights already. So property tax, 3% change, slight increase due to property transfers. Sales tax, our major industry groups that are driving these sales tax increases or slowdowns are around building construction, fuel service stations, and again, the county pool piece. Other taxes, again, so cannabis business tax, we're only estimating around $600,000 for twenty-three, twenty-four compared to our almost $700,000 for twenty-two, twenty-three in our adopted budget. There's really no significant changes for license permits and franchises. Other agencies, so there's a line in there for other agencies that's primarily derived from our public safety contract that we have with Sonoma State University for our dispatch services. We did renew that contract for five years, and so those are the set rates. Charges for services, making sure I'm on the right side, we have decreased revenues in twenty and twenty-one, primarily due to Kessing Ranch, right? And then police charges, we're continuing to move back to normal post-COVID. So those are the things I was talking about, where they were doing less enforcement during COVID, because we're trying to make sure people were safe, so it wasn't as much enforcement and ticketing as much as, you know, outreach and messaging and those types of things, and coordinated efforts in those accounts. And now they're going to be probably moving much more, as they've included in their budget, towards some things that have fees and penalties, which would bring in more revenue to the city. Other revenues, really, there's no significant change. Transfers and reflect the bond issuance receipts for twenty-one, twenty-two. So some highlights of the outflows, so that was all of our inflows, changes that happened in our revenues, things that happening in general fund revenues for operations. Some of the outflows, so again, CalPERS twenty-one, twenty-two, it just is, I have to keep mentioning it, because it is an outlier when you see these budgets year to year. But the twenty-three, twenty-four includes that full lump sum payment again, and the amount is approximately $365,000. It includes some, excuse me, it does not include the debt service for the pension obligation bonds or the twenty-two, twenty-three increase. So that's a little bit different than our forecast, which had that included. This does not include those debt service payments to that. Allocated contract service, so allocated contracts are those that service the whole city. So these are things like shredding services, janitorial costs, audit fees, our utilities. So I had an interesting call from a resident, actually not of Cattati, but of Sebastopol, who was interested in how our budget works in order for them to evaluate Sebastopol budget, and why they would have an expense on the general fund side for water. And it's like, well, because I know for us, we make sure when we use water in our parks, that's a general fund expense, and we have to pay it to the water fund. And so those type of utilities, PG&E, those also get allocated across. So those are some pieces in there that do get. Insurance increases, we've beaten that to death. So, sorry, my numbers I spoke earlier. So it's 15% increase for the general liability and workers' comp, 7.5% for the others. So that's the actual what is in here. And again, we talked about the state of the insurance market. It's really unknown. Hopefully, we get some good numbers soon, and if not, there will be revisions. All the estimates based on full staffing includes only negotiated MOUs. We're going to have two coming up, and we're continuing to evaluate staffing levels. We do have them included within the budget here for any of the changes that we have presented during our planning sessions, our strategic planning for those departments, so those are included, but anything else is not included for that. So very briefly, I wanted to touch on allocations. So I just kind of give a brief description of that, but each individual within the city has an allocation. So myself, I have a general fund allocation for the administrative services department. I also have allocation that goes to the water and to the sewer and to the successor agency. So each individual person gets alloc, has an allocation for that person, and that then derives our overall allocated for the whole city. So anything that's an allocated contract service, we use our total FTE for all of our staff, and that then drives that allocation of any of those contracts. We do have other things that are specifically city allocations, and so it takes only city staff and their FTEs, and allocates it across those FTEs that they have. It's very convoluted, there's lots of spreadsheets that go into it, but just knowing that there's a lot of, like, the insurance that does make sure it goes all the way to the water and sewer funds, because it does cover those as well. So here's our overall general fund operating outflow expenditures by department with major changes. And you say major, but really, dollar-wise, there's nothing significant. We're really keeping it pretty flatline as much as possible, and the changes are primarily related to staffing, but we'll go into each one of the departments as we go through. Oh, yeah.
I wasn't sure the right time to ask. I noticed that we have a lot of allocated expenses to the city council, and that's based on us having two and a half FTE. And I'm just wondering, how does that, half, half of an FTE per each of us, how did we arrive at that, since we're only paid $300 a month?
So, so it used to be one FTE for each of you, and so we pulled that back and said, really, it's, it's half. So that could be up for negotiation, I guess, but it's a matter of, we also put in, you know, you guys put in time outside, and there's other resources and stuff that go to it, insurance, you know, and, and so finding a reasonable basis. We knew it wasn't one anymore, that, you know, doesn't make sense. But, but we feel like you do put in a significant amount of time and energy towards the city and our efforts, and so.
It's, yeah, it's not based on salaries. It's, obviously.
Yeah.
It's, it'd be like point zero zero, yeah, obviously. So just for the allocation basis, it's like basically half-time, like you're all half-time.
Yeah. It's, it's sort of interesting, because if somebody doesn't understand how the allocations work, looks at the budget, then it looks like the city council has this, you know, pretty big budget, which we don't really have.
Because a lot of it's the allocated stuff that just gets allocated to us because we exist.
Right. Yeah, it is.
All right, thank you.
So just, that's things like, because I was seeing also, it talked about memberships and subscriptions, and I'm presuming that's like CalCities and going to the conference and that type of thing? Is that where this $150,000 goes to?
So that, so there are dues and subscriptions, those are separate, those are included within other costs, training, and those are also included within other expense, excuse me, other expense. So any contracts would be included within contracts, and those are primarily allocated to your department. I don't.
Yeah, think of just like citywide allocated stuff. So like on, like utilities would be a good example, electric, gas, things that aren't attributable to a certain department, right? Contract services could be janitorial, could be like the auditing and the sort of annual financial statements and those kind of things, that these, the contracts that we have to maintain for the web streaming and all this, that, those are type, those are sort of citywide, they're not attributed, like, we don't just dump them all in one department. We just, we allocate it, because it serves a citywide function.
Right, no, I understand. I'm just, I'm curious what the $153,000 goes to.
No, this isn't just allocated, this is entire outflows.
Yeah. Operating outflow is 153, well, 152, 689. So I'm just curious what, what that, because I know we're paid 300 a month, so I know it's not salary. So what is, what does that go to?
So I would point to packet page seventy-six.
Sixty-three, I'm looking at.
Seventy-eight, thank you.
Seventy-eight has at the top.
My glasses clear. Yeah, we turn to packet page seventy-eight. So that breaks out the department. Let me zoom in, scroll up.
So Kay, to answer your question, the salary part for us is really only, well, it depends which one I, to, to.
So the, the. So 54,000 is health insurance and that type of thing, then?
Salary and benefits. So it's all of the benefits.
But it, so it's put together. So it's, okay, so that's 54. What is the other 110?
That's all the alloc, a lot of the allocated stuff that's down below underneath there. See all those material supplies, contract services, legal, utilities, repair and maintenance, other expenses, capital outlay, miscellaneous expense. So we get a portion of all of those because we exist.
The miscellaneous expense, the $25,000, is something that's historically been there for council to do. What it has always been is, well, not always, but it's a pretty broad statement, but in the last 10 years or so, it's been like $15,000 to, to the Chamber of Commerce annually of that 25, and then the other 10 to waive fees for various events and things like that. That's usually how that 25 gets used, has been used historically.
And then to add on to that, that, the other expense piece, so we talked about contract services, it's primarily allocated. Those other expenses, that's where the insurance is, and so those also are allocated expenses. And so that's where, what's driving that $38,000 there as well. Or sorry. I'm in the wrong column. Does that make sense now, Kay?
Yeah, more, more so. I, I'm curious why we give 15,000 to the Chamber of Commerce, but I guess we can talk about that another time?
Mm-hmm, yeah. They request it for various things, but we can talk about it. It's a separate item.
Yeah.
But, but really, what it comes down to is there's just a, I mean, it's really just a couple discretionary things. It's the, you know, $25,000 and a handful of subscriptions to various organizations are really what's discretionary.
Okay, thank you.
It, it just looked like a really big number for $300 a month, you know?
So then here's the, another picture of that, where it's the department outflows for the proposed budget year 23, 24, in a pie graph by the department showing lump sums, majority of it, again, is going to police. Again, as unfair as it is to have five, you know, or 2.5, they have the most staff. So any, you know, audit expense or anything else that's citywide, they have the highest FTE, so they get the highest allocation, even though they could care less about my audit, even though I know it's really important. They get the majority of those expenses that are allocated. They do also have the most FTE, so they have the highest salaries, benefits, pension, expense, et cetera. But those are the biggest pieces of those outflows as projected for 23, 24 as proposed.
And just in terms of, I mean, I guess this, I'm curious as to why the police department is the largest department at the city? Like by, you know, by such a huge number?
Well, I, probably the easiest way to answer that is that it's, they have a, they have two different functions that have to operate 24/7. So they have a lot of people just to cover all the shifts. They have dispatch, and then they have patrol. And so in order to have enough people to cover all those shifts, you just have more staffing.
To mathematically cover 24/7, you need, with nobody leaving or doing anything, you need a minimum of five people to just cover 24/7. And that's nobody taking vacation, nobody being sick, nobody.
Right, and we have 20, right? Is that right?
Um, I think it's twenty. I think it's 22.
22?
Yeah, 22.
So, I think it would be a minimum of five for dispatch.
Right.
And a minimum of five officers, not including any, you know, sergeants or, because you can't have one person on shift. You have to have multiple. So, then you're at a, yeah.
And even dispatchers, they, they have multiple dispatchers on shift in certain times of day as well, so.
Just, you know, to put it in perspective, Kay, that, this is a true picture for most cities. It's at least half of their budget if they have police.
If we had fire, it'd be the other half.
Yeah, if we had fire, yeah. All these other ones would get even tinier if we had police and fire. Because, again, that 24/7.
Yeah, I mean, I guess...
Takes more people.
I, I understand. And I, I'm curious about, you know, I guess that's part of the reason I'm asking for data as well, is to see how they're actually being used, you know? From what I heard before, it sounded like the vast majority of what they do is traffic stops. And I'm wondering if that's necessarily needed 24/7? You know, I don't, I don't know. I'm just, it just looks like a lot to me.
So, so is that a, I guess it's something that would come up in the annual report, right? So, chief talks about all the resources and things. And I know that is something that's coming up here fairly shortly, is that annual report. And that'll hopefully have more data points to talk to those, those issues.
And just to clarify, I'm not suggesting we don't need a 24-hour, some type of, you know, security. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, you know, it looks like a lot. That's all.
So, I think these, the next slides kind of get into those major changes and what's happening at that department level and why you're seeing those pieces of changes and what the costs are. And so, for city council, we did have the increased benefits, primarily health insurance was a driver there. We have continued allocation of our indirect costs, city utilities, insurance, and other expenses, which include additional payments for dues and subscriptions and trainings and meetings. So, those things, and what that's meant to mean is, the last two years, really, we haven't had those meetings that they've been off-site or remote. And so, they either offered them for free or significantly cheaper. But now, we're going, and this is true for every department. We're going out and actually integrating with the world again and doing those inside meetings and going and having a hotel and flight charges and things, so that we can, again, reach out, be a part of our community as well as our fellow government community. And hopefully repaired with more things like, hey, what grants are coming down the pipelines? What's happening with you in this industry? How do we make sure we tackle these things that are maybe coming for housing? You know, so, so these are things that you're going to see in every department. But incrementally, it's more in your department, because there's little else in there. So, City Manager's Office, we have the continued inclusion of the Public Information Services within the City Manager Department. And so, that's going to be an ongoing thing. They have the surveys. We have those planned projects, which we've gone over. And so, some of the things that were included are the economic development, coordination, equity program implementations, and some of the, of course, things that have to happen, the MOU negotiations, and what's already happening, the operations plan, communication plan. So, again, we have those other things that we talked about, and those will be additionally included if those, we think, are going to have additional cost components and not just staffing resources. And so, those would be additional amendments to any budget dollars in here, once we kind of fine-tune what we're, we're going to include. So, for the Admin Services Department, and I kind of threw in community development, because I thought it would look okay on one slide, but clearly not. It could have had its own slide. So, Admin Services, we're hoping to really actually get an intern. And I know this is a part of every department, what we choose or want to do. We had one before, pre-COVID, and we're really looking forward to having someone onboard again and use those resources like we have here at Zenoma State and the JC, and bring them on and show them the importance of local government and what we do here and how they can do good for their community here. And, and so, that's something that we're going to be doing. And so, we include that within our budget every year, to make sure that we, we know that we can fund them when they come on. We have increased fiscal fees. So, as our revenues go up, so do our fiscal fees. And so, we have included those also within our department. Major projects planned, a big piece again, is that utility monthly billing and that community survey around that and bringing it back to council for discussions. Community development, we have increased one-part-time staff. Oh, I think we pulled that. We have outside contractors for building and code enforcement still functions. So, those you won't see in employee and staffing and salaries. But these are critical functions that we use through those contract services. Major projects that are planned, as we already discussed. And we also now are going to be including that multi-housing designing. The multi, I'm going to get the name wrong.
The Plex Housing.
Plex complex. Moving on to public works. So, significant other expenses include dues and subscriptions and allocated insurance. They have a higher FTE again also. So, as contract services are allocated increased, they get a higher piece of those. Major non-capital projects include wastewater system emergency generators. Again, there's a grant project, so if that comes in, that'll take a priority. And so, we can include that. Pedestrian bicycle safety projects, annual street landscape projects, hydrant ATM hopefully is coming our way. That'll be a joint project with the Admin Services Department. As well as a critical piece is our SCADA system upgrade. So, even though we're not talking water sewer, either there's the same peoples that are dedicated resources to both. And so, while it doesn't have a general fund impact, it has a personnel impact, because they'll be working on the SCADA system piece of it. Next is the Police Department. So, we have a big piece of the Police Department is continued investment in technology services through the Public Safety Consortium. So, part of, big part of their contract services are not even just allocated, which is a big piece of it. They also have their consortium fees, which they pay for all of their systems and infrastructure. And we get quarterly, basically quarterly bills from that. And they come out and they implement new systems for them, both at dispatch as well as in the vehicles for their laptops and such in the vehicles. They also are adding additional costs for training. Again, just like we're going out and doing trainings now, they're able also to go out and do a lot of catch-up and do more trainings and bring other people onboard. So, that has correlated overtime for that department due to overlap. And so, if you have increased training, we also alternatively have increased overtime to support the department needs for the 24/7 operations. Significant other expenses, as discussed, are allocated insurance, recruiting, small tools and equipment, and vehicle fuel. Hopefully, we're seeing that vehicle fuel come down as we bring onboard more of those EV to the system. So, we have three ones already here about to be upfit and two more on the way. And so, I really look forward to not getting those county bills for the fuel, fuel charges for those vehicles and seeing that cost go down for the city. The major projects planned, we already talked about a lot of those, so we'll move on. For recreation, so this is again, oh.
Yeah, I'm just curious. So, I have an electric vehicle, so I've charged when I come here sometimes. And I see there's only two, right? Or is there three? I think there are three charging stations, like, I don't know where I am, over there?
We have three here for the public, yeah.
For the public. So, how many do we have for the police?
We currently have, we currently have two, but that's about to be expanded to four.
Okay, and that's part of the budget as well? Is that part of the police budget? Okay, great, thank you.
And then, we do have one right here for our EV for, for the city, which will serve two. And so, that's already done.
Yeah, we have, we have one that's expanding to two here.
Yeah. And then, for the public, we also have them at the train depot. I think there's two spots.
Yeah, there's two.
One station, two spots.
There's two cords, yeah, two, level two.
Yes, a question?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, a question, sorry, on the significant other expenses, allocated insurance. Do we have breakdowns or is it listed in breakdowns of how much, like, premiums for police-related insurance versus other?
We do not, no. We don't have a separate breakdown of what it costs us to have a police department for our insurance. It's a, we are a city that has a police department, and this is our rate for insurance.
So, we don't have a breakdown by departments of insurance use or needs? Because I think in some cities or other, other places, that's kind of an important, you know, kind of to know as far as which departments might be driving up more the insurance rates or something. But it's all together. You said allocated together. It's not separated?
So, the overall cost is allocated based on FTE. We do not receive insurance expense as this is the insurance for the city operations. This is the insurance related to our police.
Not for claims and such.
Most, most cities that we pull with have, have police departments.
Oh, they pull their police department?
Most cities have police departments that we pull our insurance with. And so, they just, the premiums are, they don't break them out that way.
They don't break them out, break them out. Okay, all right, thank you.
As long as we're asking questions on, on this piece, I'll ask it now. So, as we move to more EVs, are you just going to handle that with utilities and allocate it to all the departments? Or you're actually going to track the police EV fuel usage and allocate that to police?
Yeah, it's an, it's an interesting question, actually. So, we're exploring the, sort of the fleet tracking options for, I mean, tracking things handheld device by handheld device.
Well, allocate by miles rather than FTE.
Pretty clunky, yeah. Or do, yeah, do a miles-type thing.
Yeah.
So, we haven't, we're still thinking through how that might best work in the future, but at this point, we don't.
Just in general, if that's a major part of the budget, shifting it to allocated to all departments would be an artificial reduction of the police budget. And so, I'd like to see it allocated to police, the fuel usage, if possible.
Right.
I agree. Okay, second question, please. Would that be the same then? Are you saying if you want it done by department, would we be allocating fuel usage, say, to like Public Works? Because they have more vehicles than, say, community development? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
I mean, fuels, I mean, be it electricity or be it gasoline, it's a fuel, right?
Right, exactly. So, I, so that's what I'm advocating. If somehow, we figure out some way to, to handle EV fuel the same, you know, so that it's allocated to the departments that use it.
Right, right. Because Public Works, I would imagine, is another big user of fuel.
It, it used to be that, well, it still is, but we're transitioning away from it, that we would, whenever we got fuel for vehicles, we'd go somewhere with like a fleet card and you'd get a bill for it. So, it was very easy to track it that way. So, it's kind of a new, trying to kind of come up with, how do you do that same sort of thing? Retract fuel usage by vehicle with a different, when you're not really going anywhere to fuel your fueling right here. So, it's totally doable. It's just a matter of thinking through how that might best work.
And I, just very briefly, it is aligned with how we currently do it. So, any, the vehicle for the fuel that goes into the vehicle goes to that vehicles. So, all of the PD vehicles go to the PD. All the public works get their public works allocation, which is part water, part sewer, part park, but yeah, water. So, so that we would hope to do something very similar, where we're just saying, these charging stations, the cost for these charging stations, that's where it goes to. So, for recreation, we have an annual software contract for rec desk. So, this runs a prime, a majority of their programs for the year. So, it all runs through this. And then, we tie in our little financial receipts on the other side. And so, while this isn't new, it is a significant piece of their contracts that they have on an annual basis. And so, that's why you wouldn't think, you know, rec, what are they, you know, contracting for? Really, that's the biggest piece of it for them. Other expenses include allocated insurance and bank fees, because they do have that third-party. They have their fees. And then, if they charge other fees, then we also have their allocation for the bank fees. So, major projects that they have planned include the dogs-in-park ordinance, run a flooding barn. So, again, that's a significant piece that we said we wanted to make sure is included. And the sunflower Putnam Park design, and the veterans' building, building incorporation within our rentals program. So, that's something moving forward pretty soon here.
Will we get a portion of those fees for managing that?
We will, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, so we have, we have basically come to term, we've basically come to basic terms, staff-to-staff come to terms on what that would look like for the vets hall, us taking over management of it. And the next step is for them to draft a contract. And then, I'll be bringing the contract to the council to have a conversation about it, about if we want to move forward or not. But that's, but the basic premise is that we, that any fees we take cover all the sort of hard costs first. So, when it's not a split. So, in other words, the power we pay, the landscaper we pay, those kind of things. That any revenue we derive would cover that first. And then, once we've covered that sort of cost to run the facility, we can't charge our staff time, but the hard costs, then we would split it on a base, some, you know, basis. So, that's, that's the basic terms of the deal that we'll be talking about.
Well, it's such an underutilized building, and it does allow for, for larger events that we, we haven't been able to, to put on. So, I think it's a great addition.
And then, last but not least, is the code compliance piece. So, there's really no significant changes. It's all run on contract services. And really, the expenses can be variable, as well as the revenues based on the caseload, what's being brought in for the code compliance pieces of it.
Is that the attorney?
No, we have, go ahead.
So, our code enforcement division, the budget lives separate from community development, but it's managed by my department. We have a one-day-a-week code enforcement officer. And then, our permit technician, Carla Duncan, supports that through accepting complaints, managing the process. So, building, it's, it's significant zoning violations, building code, substandard housing. There's a lot of issues that go into it, sign enforcement, tree removal, unpermitted tree removal. We will, council directed us to put together a presentation on kind of statistics and then bring Bob Smith, the code enforcement officer, he's going to come present. We're working on the timing for getting that before the council.
Okay, thank you. I just misread what that is. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. So, that really is our overview of what we estimate our budget for the general fund operations to be for '22, '23, as well as what we're proposing, given some variables, of course, the '23, '24 budget to be. Those variables primarily insurance, right, and additional, maybe minor contracts based on the projects that we've discussed tonight. It is a balanced budget. We're maintaining our prudent fund balance levels, again, before capital projects, which we're going to discuss at a future date in two weeks. We're going to continue to closely monitor the operating revenues, ensure that we're, have a sufficient fund balance as we're developing the next piece of our budget study. And again, if there's critical information out there in the economics that are saying, you know, sales tax are going to do way better. You know, we under-projected. We need to revise this, because we continue to get revisions up until budget adoption. And we continue to reach out to see what's really happening, what we can really rely on. We will make sure those are included. City staff is going to continue to update council on those changes. Operating reserves, again, are expected to meet those reserves. And we're pending evaluation of the capital projects. And we really want to just say that we want to be as transparent and, as possible. And we're really hoping to get, you know, more social media and information out for our next study session and getting input. Because, again, a lot of people have desires and wants around capital projects and interesting ideas around what's happening in water and sewer. And so, we would love to see more information as that's coming out and being developed for council's adoption eventually in a month. So, that's all I have to present. I'm happy to take any feedback.
Angela, our current MOUs that we have will go through till the end of the fiscal year, correct? We don't have any gap?
Correct.
Okay, that was my recollection, but I'm never sure, because sometimes we, we get caught.
There are two going into negotiations, but they're.
Right, but they go through June thirtieth of next year. Okay. That was my recollection, but. Is that different from project labor agreements, the MOUs, or are they connected to that?
Yeah, they're different.
Very different.
Yeah. Project labor agreements usually are associated with construction, construction contracts.
Okay. Do, do we have one of, do we have those in place?
We do not, no.
Or Cattati?
No, no, we don't.
Is, is there a reason why we don't?
Well, I, usually there, usually it would be, you know, some labor group that might push it in a certain area, but it hasn't come up here. So there's no, hasn't been a particular need that I've been aware of to do one.
And for larger projects, a lot of our projects are.
They're all.
Are small.
But even, I mean, any, any project of any size is, has a lot of labor requirements in it already, so.
Right.
It just hasn't come up.
Okay, it hasn't come up. Okay, thanks.
It's a very nice hexagonal budget cycle. I don't know if all cities have hexagonal budget cycles, but I like it. I had a question about cannabis. Is, is our cannabis tax, is that mostly through retail or is it spread out across all our different cannabis licensees?
A, a majority of the sales tax receipts are from retail operations.
Okay. So is there any data yet, I assume not, from, from a second dispensary being open?
There's limited data. We had one quarter so far, and so that's kind of what this is based on. And I, I think that was even a partial quarter because they started operations on Halloween, I believe. And so really, it's two-thirds of a quarter where they were just starting. And so it's really, that's where we're kind of building in conservatism based on what we knew kind of happened with Mercy post-COVID and our other operations. So it, it could be much better than what we're estimating, but that's where we are.
Okay.
Yeah.
And by the time of the final budget, if you get another quarter or two and it's showing cannabis revenue is a lot higher, you might adjust that?
Absolutely, yes, yeah. One of our retailers does pay monthly, so that is incorporated within this. What we know, we're getting in monthly receipts from them because they got caught off-guard one time for a quarterly payment, and so they never wanted to deal with that again. So they do pay monthly, but the other ones do pay quarterly.
Thanks.
Did you have a question? Okay. Sylvia? Dan? All right. Are we all happy?
I think we're happy. Yeah, I appreciate the feedback and look forward to bringing back the, the full rest of the budget in two weeks. Same time, same.
Thank you.
Different time, different time, same place.
Then let's see, where are we? Hang on, let me get my sheet. So any information received after the agenda was posted? Those items were given to us at the dais, and they were put in the back and put on the web agenda. Did I get all of that correct?
That is correct, Mayor Harvey.
Okay, all right, got all that. So given all of that, I believe that we will adjourn this meeting at nine thirty-six. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, staff, for all the hard work on getting us this far. And I can't wait to get my big giant budget.
I don't know, it's only eighty-six pages after a nine-hundred-page pack of this. It's kind of.